Spending the rest of your afternoon with us. Today is Tuesday, January the 27th. This is a regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. We won't have the invocation today because our pastor got caught up in something else, but we'll go straight to the pledge. Councilman Lamerson.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris? Introductions?
No introductions today, Mayor, but, and you know, I just wanted to say, when people pass, I think that's all a natural part of life, but there's been a couple of events, and since we met last, that have really shook us to the core again, when people die in a very unnatural way. So as we do say our prayers tonight, let's try and remember the Wells family and everything they're going through, Mark Potter's family, Jody Reed's family, and on a separate incident, Amber Harrington, who died way, way too young. So just wanted to say, you know, tonight, maybe when you say your prayers, remember those people, and maybe they'll get some peace.
Thank you, Chris. Rogue Hall, please.
Mayor Kirkendall?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kukio?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
Here.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
All present.
Craig, any announcements?
I have no announcements.
Okay. Let's move right on to the presentations. Today, we're blessed to have Helen Stevenson, who's going to tell us about what's going to go on at the Prescott Film Festival. Thank you for being here, Helen.
Thank you for having me, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate being here. My name's Helen Stevenson, and I'm the Director of the Prescott Film Festival. We started the festival in 2009 with a monthly series, and our first annual multi-day festival was in 2010. And this year, we're presenting our sixth annual festival. I'm really excited about, July 22nd through the 26th. We're still an all-volunteer community organization and a 501(c)(3), and thank you, Elizabeth. She helped me fill out my paperwork to start the 501(c)(3). Our mission is to provide the community with cultural events that entertain, inspire, and inform while supporting independent and critically acclaimed films and filmmakers around the world. And last year, we added a high school film competition that brought in students from around Arizona and California. We have four organizations who have supported us financially or with in-kind donations since 2009, and I think that's worth giving them some kudos for: the City of Prescott, Dino Belleri and the Belleri Building, Margot Christensen and the Marriott Residence Inn and Marriott Spring Hill Suites, and the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe. And we're pleased that in the last few years, we've received donations from the James Family Trust, the JW Kekefer Foundation, and the Margaret T. Morris Foundation. I'd like to talk specifically about February, because it's our Oscar month. As you know, the, well, maybe you don't know, but all the Oscar nominations have been announced. And we try to bring as many films to Prescott that are nominated as we possibly can, get the time and the rights to screen. And we have eight events in February. First, we'll be screening all of the Oscar-nominated short films: the animated, the documentary, and the live-action. Additionally, we'll be screening three feature films: Timbuk II, which is nominated for Best Foreign Film, about the city of Timbuk II, which was a beautiful and peaceful place until jihadists took over the town, based on a true story; Citizen Four, a documentary about Edward Snowden; and we'll end the Oscar-nominated films with a light touch: Wes Anderson's The Grand Budapest Hotel, a fun comedy with an amazing color palette that's just beautiful on the big screen throughout. On February 22nd, we partner with Yavapai College and bring the live broadcast of the Academy Awards to the big screen at the Yavapai College Performing Arts Center. This is free and open to the public. We'll have antique cars in front of the theater. Folks can walk the red carpet. We'll have games and prizes throughout the evening, including an Oscar ballot, so you can vote for who you think will be the winner, and you could win a platinum pass to the annual festival. However, if folks would like to support the film festival financially, we have an Oscar cocktail party preceding the broadcast with food, drinks, and live music. And in the midst of all of this, on February 14th, we have our annual Valentine's Day dinner and an evening of romantic shorts. Dinner, live music, followed by a series of short films. And all of our screenings in February are held in the Yavapai College Performing Arts Center. So do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
But now the whole town knows about it.
Excellent.
Okay. Thanks for being here, Helen. Appreciate it. Okay, we're really honored, at this moment, to have an old timer with the city that's going to give us a little update. Bruce Martinez, our former fire chief. Bruce, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon, and thanks for having us here. I'd like to introduce Alexis Scholl. She's one of our board members. I call her our technical assistant, or expert. She's a Prescott High School senior, and she's going to go to ASU and study political science.
Wonderful. Can everybody hear in the back? Okay, okay.
We're here today, obviously, we're the, I'm the chairman of the newly-formed Granite Mountain Hot Shot Memorial Partnership, obviously due to the tragedy of losing 19 people. In the, in the following weeks of, of that incident, I was contacted by the Fire Department to help field some calls for, just so many people are calling in wanting to help. They had thoughts and ideas about memorials and such, so I did that for, for quite a while. And the community input was amazing. I have all kinds of emails archived that eventually I will get out and tell them about this. But it was amazing, and, you know, as that kind of wound down, it became apparent that we really needed a memorial in Prescott, in downtown Prescott, and, and the job kind of evolved into that. And that's why I'm here today, leading that, that charge. We, in, in my research right away, I was able to talk to a guy named Jay Winnick, who was the Marketing Director of the 9/11 Memorial, and he gave us some extremely valuable advice. That advice was to slow way down and take your time with this thing, and that's what we did. And this is just the first step in the process of rolling this out to the public. There were some initial steps that we had to take. One was to form our own nonprofit group, which we have, secure a location or site for the memorial, form a Board of Directors, and then develop a website. Currently, we have, we have just recently gotten our nonprofit corporation status, and we've applied for a 501(c)(3). As far as the location, we would, we would like this memorial to be preferably at the Quark House, and we have had some initial discussions, I have personally, with Supervisor Ollie Simmons, and, and he seems to be very supportive of, of that idea. And, and part of the process will be to formally ask them for that, so. As far as the Board of Directors, we, we really wanted to choose a broad cross-section of people within Yavapai County, and we did that. We have some great board members, which we'll show on the, on the About Us section of the, of the website, which is the other thing that we had to develop, and this is what we have to this point. There's still a lot of it that's under construction, and a lot of decisions to be made to, to really get this thing off the ground, but we're thankful that we've gotten to this point and, and can go forward. Our, our vision is to build a lasting memorial that will stand prominently in Prescott as a testament to the honorable service given and the ultimate sacrifice made by 19 members of the Granite Mountain Hot Shots. We're always going to keep that in mind as we move forward on this, on this memorial. Our mission is to serve as an independent organization that solicits its input using an inclusive process in order to commission a just and lasting memorial to the fallen Granite Mountain Hot Shots. We have really no preconceived notions about what the memorial will be. There's too much to do at this point, and the, and the reason that we didn't want to come in with any conceived notions is, is to get the public input. We will have an interactive way for people, for anybody, to, to give their input, their thoughts, ideas, anything they, any input that they might want to give, give to us they can do through this website. If you go to the About Us page, Alexis. There's our Board of Directors, myself as the chairman. John Coleman is a, is a renowned artist who will be helping us with, with that end of it. Bill Fain, I think everybody knows Bill Fain of the Fain Signature Group. Celeste Gordon is with the U.S. Forest Service. James Holz is retired Yavapai County Administrator. Ernie Jones is the President of the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe. Gail Mayberry, who was supposed to be here today, but she had her own meeting to, to attend to, is the Town Manager for the Town of Clarkdale. Pat McCarty is a native of Prescott. He was a Granite Mountain Hot Shot at one time and is working full-time as currently an engineer with the City of Prescott. Danny Parker, who is, who is the father of Wade Parker, is a retired fire captain. Paul Roberts, who's been in town forever, is a, is a local attorney, who has helped me out immensely, and then Alexis Scholl, our technical expert, who I introduced early. I would be remiss if I didn't thank the, the people below there. John Buchanan and Kathy Briskie Perkins and Co., they're our marketing team that are doing this all volunteer. They're out of San Francisco. Matt Holesworth has helped us with the, with the accounting end of it. Bob Rose of Country Bank is our IT person. William Chilson of House Chilson and Associates is taking care of our insurance. And way in the back is Brenda Parsons of Roberts and Carson, if you'd stand up, please. I'm going to embarrass her, I'm sorry. Anyway, you know, that, that's the person that takes all the notes, makes, you know, sets all the meetings, the, you know, the, the one that really does a lot of the work behind this thing, so very thankful for her being here. The, I don't know if I announced the, the, I don't think I did, but the, the website is www.gmhsmemorial.com. And like I said, it's still under construction, but we hope to have all the functions working out as soon as possible. And then, lastly, the Granite Mountain Hot Shot Memorial Partnership anticipates, anticipates that in the future, we'll be requesting endorsement, official endorsement of the city, as well as financial assistance. So we don't know when that'll be, but it'll be in the future, and we'll come back, and, and you can see where we're at from there. So I thank you for having us today, and thank you for your support in this endeavor.
What about you? Stay right where you're at. Any questions? Go.
Chief, do you have any vision yet of what you're going to try to achieve, whether it be, I would assume it's going to be a bronze sculpture of some sort?
We purposely do not want to have any preconceived ideas, because we want, we want the public to be able to give their input, filter through all those, and then pick the best.
So is that going to be a process that you're going to advertise to the public?
Yes, yes. And, and through the interactive process on, on the website, and so we'll be, we'll be able to lay that out for people wanting to do that. And, you know, I anticipate that it will probably be something granite, bronze, marble, somewhere in that neighborhood, but we don't, we don't know. Somebody may just blow it up, blow us out of the water with a great idea, and we, and we go with that.
Do you have a timeline or a frame of mind when you might suggest that be accomplished?
I think, I think we're looking at probably three to six months for the, just for people to give their input and filter all those ideas.
Appreciate it.
And come up with some sort of concept.
You'll come back and show those to everybody through, what different channels are you going to use to?
We'll, we'll keep the, the website updated as to the progress, and then we'll also, like I said, we'll also be back to ask for.
Great. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. Bruce, thank you and your committee for undertaking this endeavor, and please just let us know if there's anything we can do to support your efforts.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Just thank you and everybody that's involved in this.
Thank you.
Jim.
No, I just agree with the rest of the council.
Bruce, thanks very much. It's quite an undertaking, and for the, for the public's knowledge, the, early on after our tragedy, the, some of the folks from Newtown, Connecticut, came out and visited Prescott because they'd had their own tragedy. And one of the things that they cautioned us very heavily was that, take your time, get public input, and put a group together that has the, the interest of, of the entire community at heart, and it looks to me like you've done that. And thank you, and tell us what we can do, but we will keep our nose out of it. Okay?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Okay, let's move forward. Next item will be the consent agenda. Any comments from the council? Any changes, corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor moved to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Seeing.
Motion been made and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, the regular agenda, item A.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 4921-1459, amending City Code Title IV, Chapter 7-4 Business Regulations, Alcoholic Liquor Permit Fees, by establishing permit fees for liquor license Series 13, Series 18, and Series 19. Ordinance Number 4921-1459, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title IV, Chapter 7 of the Prescott City Code by deleting certain lang, certain language and adding new language to Section 4-7-4. Mayor and Council, this item is presented for your consideration of setting a liquor license permit fee for the following series of licenses: Series 13, which is a farm winery license; Series 18, in-state craft distiller; Series 19, remote tasting room. As you may know, the Arizona state law allows cities and towns to set permit fees for the selling of spirituous liquors. In accordance with that legislation, in 2003, the city adopted an ordinance setting liquor license application and annual permit fees for a very, for various series of liquor licenses. A little bit about these liquor licenses. A Series 13 is a in-state farm winery license, and this is basically a winery located in Arizona that produces at least 200 gallons, but not more than 40,000 gallons, of wine annually. It has on-and-off sale, on-and-off sale retail privileges, and it allows the holder to serve wine produced on the premises for on-and-off sale consumption. This Series 13 license, excuse me, has been in existence for some time, but the city had not previously set or established a fee. There are two businesses within the city limits that currently hold a Series 13 license, and those licenses were both issued in 2013. One is anticipated to open in 2015, and the other one is currently open. And then the recommended annual permit fee for the Series 13 license is $100. The Series 18 license is an in-state craft distiller license, and this is also a license located in Arizona, produces not more than 20,000 gallons of distilled spirits annually, has on-and-off sale privileges, and this license may also apply for one remote tasting room license, which is located in the state. The Series 18 license just went into effect in 2014, and there is one Series 18 license in the city. And basically, that was originally a Series 1 license, and then when they created, when the state created the Series 18, it switched over to a Series 18 license. And it's being recommended an annual permit fee of $100. And then the Series 19, Remote Tasting Room, is located in Arizona, owned and operated by a licensee that concurrently owns one of these four licenses. So to be able to get a remote tasting license, you have to hold a out-of-state farmery winery license, an out-of-state craft distillery, or an in-state farmery and an in-state craft distillery license to be able to get a remote tasting room. And again, this one was put in place, created by the state in 2014, and currently there are no licenses in, in the city that have gotten a remote tasting room license. And it's recommended that the fee for this be $50 per tasting room. You can have up to two tasting rooms for a farm winery, and you can have up to one tasting room for a craft distillery. So basically, those are the fees being presented. I can answer any questions that you might have about these fees, but it's kind of a, kind of a housekeeping to see if you want to set a fee for this item, for these types of licenses or not.
Steve, looks like you're up.
I guess my question would be, you know, everybody gets taxed and feed to death. I would have to ask, how, number one, did we come to the rationale of the charge? And is it to cover the cost of services for inspection? What is the fee actually for?
It's, the city in 2003 established an application fee, so there, so if, if someone wants to apply for a liquor license, it's $354 for the application for the city. This is an annual fee that's charged once you have a, a license, and there's also, the state also charges an annual, an annual fee. The fee goes to the tourism fund, so it's just an annual fee that, I'm not quite sure why they decided to set the permit fees at the time.
I, I would suppose, from what I understand, and I don't know that it'd be true, that some of these areas that fees are set utilize our services in the city more than a regular established business for police protection and fire protection.
Right.
But just to arbitrarily set a fee, I don't think we can realistically do that. But if these fees are justified based upon the city's response of what they have to do, I'm okay with it. But, you know, just to throw a fee out there, and there's like seven, eight, nine, 10 different fees here, you know, $662 for a bar, I know we're not talking about a bar, but it's on the list, to pay that every single year, I guess as a business owner, I'd say, as a cost of doing business, why am I paying this fee, and what am I getting for it? And the justification I've always heard is because it's the demand on city services. I would hope that was still the case, and we're just not trying to gouge a business owner for a cash cow for the city, especially when it's a yearly fee. So I don't know who can respond to that. I'm not real satisfied with the response I got, so maybe somebody can help me out with it. That's your manager.
Well, Councilman, as the clerk has commented, the use, okay, you asked about, number one, how, how is the fee set, but number two, the revenue which is derived from the fee, how is that used? And explicitly, it is used for tourism purposes. It is restricted to that. And so even, even though there have been arguments set forth that the existence of establishments, you know, which serve alcoholic beverages, you know, there may be a correlation to demand for public safety or so forth, but, but that's irrelevant with respect to the license per se. It's for tourism development. The city expands a lot of money, not only from the, from the collection of liquor license fees, not only from bed tax, but also in the general fund for tourism promotion. And so all of those efforts for tourism promotion, regardless of what funding sources used or aligned to, to that purpose of, of keeping and, and growing our tourism, because obviously that's beneficial to the city for sales tax generation, which does, as you mentioned, you know, point out, support public safety. As far as the, you know, as far as the license fees and how they're set and so forth, I imagine that's a matter of perspective, and some might consider them nominal amounts, some might want a full-blown cost study, allocation study for that, but the study would cost more than the license fee, you know, frankly. So they, as clerk said, they're somewhat arbitrary, but, but they were set for the purpose of this action item today, viewing the, you know, the magnitude or the level of the other liquor licenses for the other series on there, on what, what was determined to be appropriate, if you will, for the establishment of these new licenses. So yes, they're somewhat, somewhat arbitrary, somewhat subjective. On the other hand, they, you know, there was a comparison done with the other ones listed in your packet.
Thank you, and I just had one simple follow-up to that. You know, there's a government license fee. My question becomes through all these fees, for the wholesaler, there is no fee charged to the wholesaler. Why would they be treated different than a regular business? They're, they're a business as well. Is there state law that precludes us from charging a wholesaler for a fee where they're parked in the middle of Montezuma Street unloading alcohol, and they're, they're, you know, demanding services as well, and when there's incidents out there? I suppose, I just draw the question, why is one left out and not treated the same?
Actually, as far as the wholesaler license, there is, the state doesn't allow us to charge a fee for that particular series.
Okay.
Okay.
Alcohol is us.
Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm kind of on the line of Steve, but I'm, so this is beyond the application. This is just annual fee, because you've decided to do business in the City of Prescott, and I guess I was just monumentally naive of the, the reaching of how we can just, just start pricing all this stuff for just doing business. So every year, we just, we, whether you're a restaurant, so the state's getting theirs, we're getting ours, and we do this every year to them. Beyond, they've already done the, the, the legwork of the application, which I understand there's, there's, there's ours in that, but just now, give it to us every year.
Right. The city has decided to set those fees.
And, okay.
Well, if I could comment also, the City of Prescott statewide is not the only municipality which, which does assess liquor license fees. They're all over the board, and some are a lot, lot higher. But again, with the restricted purpose, it's really a cause, the council's policy decision of whether we're going to have liquor licenses. If, if we did away with liquor licenses, that would be, you know, what, $70,000 or $80,000 less that we would have for the promotion of tourism. So the question would be, are we going to cut the tourism budget, or are we going to get that money from somewhere else?
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. The word arbitrary when it comes to increasing or establishing a new tax always kind of bothers me. I can remember when we arbitrarily set the alternative water fee, not having any idea what it was going to cost to bring in alternative water, and I realize that now we've had people paying alternative water fees for 10, 12 years, and I don't know what all they've got to show for that. Same thing when we talked about an alarm ordinance. We created the opportunity, while there may have been a handful of people that were having a problem with their alarms, we took the position of making everybody pay the price for a couple of bad apples. And very similar to, well, one or two of my fellow council were talking about with regards to what do these people create in the way of a problem in Prescott that would establish a reason for charging them a fee for permission to be here? They're taxed by the state, they're taxed by the city, I don't know, maybe they're taxed by the county, just for permission to be in the liquor business to begin with, and now we're going to establish another fee to tax them with, all in the name of tourism promotion, and I'm not so sure I buy into all this.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. Dana, when did, you mentioned one of these was created in this last year?
Um, Series 18 and Series 19 were established by the state in July of 2014.
And that's the in-state craft distillery and the remote tasting room. And prior to that, the farm wine, we had a Series 13, but the city just recently had its first one.
Correct.
Well, unfortunately, we can't have our cake and eat it too. So we can't say, well, we're going to allow certain people not to have to pay a fee in the liquor industry and other people to pay it. I can parade in bar owners from across town who are upset about this fee, that are going to come in and say that we shouldn't be charging this at all. Alba, the state industry, doesn't like these fees. The question comes back to what the city manager brought up. If we're not going to put these fees into place for these two new licenses, that's in line with everything else that's been the city policy for the last 10 years, then, or longer, then do away with them and find $70,000 to buff up our tourism somewhere else. But don't ask to take it from the general fund, because we don't have it there. So we either need to approve these, or table this, and talk about the big question, are we going to collect this $70,000 a year to support tourism or not?
Greg, again.
I'd rather talk about the entire picture personally.
Mayor, I'll go. Well, let's talk about the entire picture. I mean, we're the council. We make these decisions, so instead of complaining about it, we can make some action. I hear enough people that said they'd work on it, work on it. You know, we're going to have, cut $70,000 from the tourism budget? Cut $70,000. Get rid of these fees then, if you want. You know, we just have to decide which way to go. To, to say we feel bad about it and not do anything about it, that just looks like we're kind of inactive, doesn't it?
My comment, this is, every year is an ongoing discussion, and the, the folks
My comment, this is, every year is an ongoing discussion. And the, the folks in the liquor industry have strong feelings that every year they have to pay a fee to, to do part of their business in Prescott. But we've also had discussions, and it will, one of these days come to a council, is the support of that industry looking at a board and booze tax to accompany the bed tax, which in most communities is already in place. So, I think the discussions at that time will be as a trade-off. If we ask that industry to collect sales tax for us, then there will be an opportunity for some type of a trade-off. This number is something in excess of $80,000 a year. It used to be 70, but it's, it's a major source of revenue now. It, it usually goes away by March or April, but January of every year, it's always a bone of contention. So, it's one of those costs of doing business, and the motel people will ask you, why do they have to charge 3% to do business? But it's because the money goes back into the fund that helps them support their business and support tourism. So, if you look at the total tourism revenue to this community, inclusive of all the sales tax from the restaurants, bars, and those things, and some retails, it's a big number. And trying to find a place to replace it is going to be very difficult, and particularly as we look at this next year. So, the council will make a decision, and if you want to talk about it now, we should agendaize it for another day, or we approve or not approve this, this fee. I think this is very minimal compared to some of the other fees. But again, this is a much smaller business portion of the liquor industry. So, Jim, you want to say something else?
Well, I just had a question, and I don't know if it's Mark Woodfill or the city manager, the question would be directed to the people that are in the retail liquor industry. Are they exempt from collecting sales tax from their patrons, number one? And then, I guess number two would be statistically, I think they also pay already a tax for permission in the state of Arizona to the state and to the city for being in the liquor industry to begin with. I think there's two overshadowing taxes that they're expected to pay for the privilege of, of doing their business wherever they do it, not just in the city of Prescott. I'm sure, as Mr. McConnell said, those taxes are statewide.
Yes, Councilman, to answer your question, like any other retail business, a restaurant or bar is subject to sales tax.
So, so they're also collecting sales tax on this too?
They're responsible for sales tax, yes.
That's it. Steve?
Well, if memory serves me right, it seems like last year we had members from the restaurant and bar association that were dismayed in the fact that these fees were in place, and we talked about a trade-off then. Have they moved any closer as a group to do anything different than what we talked about last year? Do we know? I mean, I don't know whether they're still?
There have been meetings in that industry.
Yeah.
And I would expect in the next 30, 60 days, there'll be a presentation of some type from that industry exercising their interest in working with us or working with the city to enhance the revenue for tourism development, because that's important to them.
Would it be a poor suggestion, because we are collecting these taxes now, to reduce them by half for a six-month fee until we get it figured out?
I, the council will do whatever they want. The, this will take a vote of the public. Whatever the, the proposal is brought forward, will still have to go to the public. So, you're looking at the first of next year, even if this went to a vote in the August election. So you're still looking at, at the start of next year before you would, you could affect any change in sales tax collection. So, it's not a giveaway. In other words, those that are paying for their license renewal this year, which is everybody in Prescott that's in the business, there would be no effect until the first of next year.
Gene?
Well, as you pointed out, Mayor, the, the action before us is rather limited. There is a, you know, a long list of 19 different fees, but the proposal is to add three new categories, three new fees. The rest of it is to change the name of an existing fee. So I think we should go ahead and act on this proposal before us today, and then at another time, put on our agenda the broader discussion of whether or not we have any fees at all or lower them.
What we'll be faced with, unless we just have the ability to give away $80,000 to $100,000, is find another place to recover it. Well, it's down to them. Charlie, you had anything on?
No, Mayor, I think you hit several of the high notes, and Gene as well. You know, a majority of those in business have already paid their fees, because they're due at the beginning of the year. Again, I think what we're doing here is we are keeping in line with what the city has done previously. If we want to have the conversation, we've got a big budget meeting coming up, we're going to hear the mid-year report, we're going to understand what the future looks like. I've got no problem talking about the fees, whether they go away, they be reduced, whatever. But certainly, I agree that today's not the day to make a massive adjustment in our fee structure, but at the same time, we now have new licenses, and I think those licenses should be treated the same as the existing licenses.
Mayor, I got one question. Does it cost us anything to administer these licenses, and does the state require us to, to do these licensing?
Yes. Part of the process is, is the state gets the application in, they send it to us, we post it for the 20 days, staff goes out and does research on whether, you know, it's in compliance with, with all the laws. So there's the application part of it, but also annually, then we make sure that the renewal, the state does a renewal, we have to make sure that, you know, we get the renewal in place. So there is some staff time.
So we do have staff time, and this might be just a little recovery of that, the services. So, you know, $100 bucks, how much time does that include on staff? Maybe what, a couple, three hours?
Right.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, if I'm not mistaken, and it might have been before Dana, the bed tax was an industry-driven question to the public, was supported by the hospitality industry. And if the hospitality industry part that is, with the bars and the restaurants chooses to bring forward a BB and B combination tax for the specific purpose that is restricted to parks and recreation development and tourism promotion, as was the bed tax, do we have the opportunity at that point to repeal these fees that we will be subjecting the people who are going to be subjected to it today?
I think, if I'm understanding, that you could repeal, this is a policy, these fees are set as a policy. So if your question is if you can choose not to have the liquor license annual fee, you can do that.
Jim, I think it could be a part of the ballot initiative, the repeal. John, you, you would weigh in on that, but I was told earlier on that, that you could specify.
It, it could be, I guess if it were done correctly, it could repeal the existing, because remember, it's a, it's a code change.
Yeah.
So, the council could on its own, you know, repeal this, repeal this ordinance if, if, if a booze tax was, was adopted by way of, by way of a vote, because the charter requires that any new sales tax be submitted, or be approved by the voters. But these are fees, they aren't, they aren't a tax, so the council can approve or repeal them.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I'm sure the industry will be very interested in, if they support this other, this other process, is they want to get rid of this. And whatever it would take to ensure that, that if the other system passed, that they would not be burdened with this, this fee the next time. So, anybody else? This being a public hearing, any comments from the public? Had a thumb up, okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 4921-1459.
Second.
Motion made in second, it vote please.
Passes four to three. Councilman Blair, Councilman Lamerson, and Councilman LaZelle Desente.
And Mayor, my no vote was simply to get the group as well as the government off the dime and get this to the public for a vote.
Okay. There's, there's meetings being held in this timeframe, so. Item B, when you're ready.
Item 2B, approval to purchase security gates at the Prescott Public Library from TechLogic Corporation using Yavapai Library Network master contract pricing in the amount of $31,069.36.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This item requests authorization in the amount of $31,069.36 for the removal of old radio frequency identification security gates and the installation of new security gates at the Prescott Public Library. These gates help ensure that items leaving the building are properly checked out and thereby helping protect taxpayers' investments in library materials. Funding for the project is included in the current fiscal year budget and is part of the contribution provided by the Yavapai County Free Library District for technological improvements. The Yavapai Library Network has the contract, but TechLogic is being utilized for this project. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Comments? Any comments from the audience, questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the purchase of security gates at the Prescott Public Library in the amount of $31,069.36.
Second.
Motion made in second, it vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. See you when you're ready.
Declarating potential public interest, so I'm going to take up, take off.
Item 2C, approval of purchase of two each six cubic yard vertical stationary compactors from Action Compaction Equipment LLC in the total amount of $23,120.15 solid waste fund.
Mayor and Council, good afternoon. In 2005, the city installed stationary vertical compactors in the Whiskey Row Alley when the garage on Granite Street parking structure was built. And the compactors were intended to consolidate the solid waste collection services in the alley. The existing compactors are 10 years old, and they are at the end of their useful lives. Maintenance has included replacement of major hydraulic components, electrical components, and structural repairs, and we're basically fixing them weekly at this point. The two compactors allow the solid waste division to provide solid waste service daily in Whiskey Row Alley while minimizing the number of containers that are in the alley. That alley is very congested, and it's already, we've had to do some things in there to help with the congestion. Without the two compactors, the division would have to place about six eight-yard containers in the alley to provide the same service that we're currently providing, and that just clutters, clutters the alley. The solid waste division conducted an invitation for bid process, and on January 8th, 2015, two bids were received. And based upon the results, award to Action Comp, Action Compaction as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder is recommended. The price includes the two compactors, a three-year warranty, freight installation, and taxes. And funding of $27,000 is budgeted in the current fiscal year for this purchase. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you, and Stephanie, thanks for bringing this forward. We've been looking to replace those for some time. I noticed in the bid that it talked about annual maintenance. Are we going to pursue that with the vendor or not?
That is, let me look here and see if I have that. Annual maintenance is an option. At this point, I'm not sure. I think there's about a year warranty there, and when we talk to the vendor, we can figure that part of it out.
Perfect. And what is the anticipated delivery and installation?
I don't have my glasses on, and let me see. Councilman, I'm not sure at this time, but I would guess it would be within the next 90 days.
Wonderful. Again, I appreciate you guys taking a look at this, and I know the other ones, they are literally at the end of their life.
They are, and we will also be notifying the, the users of the, the compactors, so that they'll know when we're going in to do the work to replace them. There's some concrete work that we're anticipating we'll have to also do.
Great, thank you.
Steve?
Stephanie, quick question. Typically, the residential houses, as well as the commercial sanitation folks are charged, the businesses are charged a fee for utilizing dumpsters and waste receptacles. Do the businesses that use those vertical compactors pay that fee on their, their waste bills?
Councilman, yes, they're billed through our financial system at the city, and they're billed on the municipal bill along with any other services they may have from the city.
So we are recouping the cost of doing business from those businesses to provide the vertical compactors?
Yes, Councilman, they're charged accordingly for the amount of service we provide in the alley and the cubic yardage that's in there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Just to tie on what Charlie was saying, Stephanie, if we do decide to have a service contract, as well as you probably know, if they're out-of-town servicers, then they're almost useless to wait the 24 to 48-hour turnaround, so.
Yes, Councilman, that's sort of been our, what we've found out in the past. If we have to have them come out of the valley, they're a little slow in responding, and we're over there fixing things first.
Yep.
Just, just a question, maybe it's a comment. The 25% variation in two bids in the $30,000 range, any, any feel of, that's, that's quite a...
Mayor, it is quite a difference, but we did double-check with the vendor to make sure that that's what their bid was and what they were bidding. It was two compactors, and, and we confirmed it with the bidder.
That's great, yeah.
Okay, so I'm not sure why the other one was so high.
Yeah, and, and again, just one other thing, they're an out-of-town vendor. Will we, Mark, will we have to pay sales tax to them? If, if the point of the delivery is here from an out-of-state vendor, we'd probably end up paying a use tax, but I think we would not have to pay sales tax.
We'll, we'll have to look into it, but it could be use tax. It will be one or the other.
Yeah, if it's use tax, we'd get to keep some of it. Okay. Do we have a, any comments from the public on that? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of two six cubic yard vertical stationary compactors from Action Compaction Equipment LLC in the amount of $23,000, excuse me, $23,120.15.
Second.
Motion made in second, it vote please.
Passes six to zero.
Item D, when you're ready.
Item 2D, approval rental of a horizontal brush grinder on a monthly basis from Dodge Diesel Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $60,000 solid waste fund.
Mayor and Council, the solid waste division diverts green, green waste daily from the waste stream at the Sun Dog Transfer Station. Green waste, which consists of branches, limbs, shrubbery, clippings, and other vegetation, is stockpiled onsite until we have a big enough pile for processing into wood chips by, under an intergovernmental agreement we have currently with Yavapai County for brush grinding. And currently, the division has stockpiled approximately 3,000 tons of green waste, all of which will be diverted from landfill disposal and recycled by offering the wood chips free of charge to Prescott residents and to others. Once the material is processed into the chips, it will be made available, like I said, free of charge to the, to the public. Currently, Yavapai County is holding free slash drop-off events for their residents, and so the operator and the brush grinder that we usually get is busy, and it's going to be tied up with the county for several months until like late spring. By then, we'll have the current 3,000 tons that we have, plus we will have added to that pile, and we're also anticipating holding free slash drop-off events for Prescott residents on Saturdays in June. So essentially, the pile will just continue to grow, and we are, we will run out of space at Sun Dog if we don't rent a brush grinder to help us get through the next few months while the other brush grinder's in use by the county.
Charlie?
We did an invitation for bid process, and on January 8th, 2015, two bids were received, and based... And based upon the results, award to Dodd Diesel as the lowest responsive responsible bidder is recommended. The monthly rental rate includes mobilization and demobilization costs, transportation of the brush grinder, taxes, eight hours of training so that solid waste personnel can operate the brush grinder, and also all other related costs. And Dodd Diesel has confirmed availability of the grinder for two months beginning on February 16th of 2015. And the solid waste division budgets about $120,000 a year for brush grinding, and it is estimated that the current stockpile will take about two months to process at an estimated cost of $60,000. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Charlie.
Mayor, thank you. And Stephanie, you and I had a chance to speak before the meeting, but we're spending $1,000 a day to rent a piece of equipment. And I would like to take a look with our budget discussions coming up, and I understand that your department's already begun the process of the city purchasing this type of equipment for our use so that it's available year-round, and after the span of just a few years, we're not just giving money away to operate it.
Yes, Councilman, we're planning on putting a capital request into the FY '16 budget process to purchase a brush grinder so that we can have it when we need it. Whether it'll be new or used is yet to be determined, but we will be requesting that in the budget process.
My understanding from just the limited research that I did is, in 10 months of use, there's a used one for sale in the valley. Within 10 months of use, we could have it paid off in full, essentially. And we've got the opportunity, and based upon your budget, it wouldn't take long for that to occur, so.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet, I see the $250,000 was an estimated cost to provide some services, et cetera. What would a brush grinder cost?
Councilman Lamerson, a brush grinder is going to run somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 to probably $600,000.
Okay. I think the public needs to hear that as to what the cost would be projected to be and why we would be looking at spending $60,000.
Yes, it's, one thing is for sure, we're always going to have green waste coming into the transfer station because of where we live, and so having our own brush grinder makes sense. It doesn't make sense to transfer it out to the landfill. It makes a lot more sense for us to keep it onsite and process it into the wood chips. We've had a lot of people give us very favorable comments about our wood chips.
And if we were to get a brush grinder, where would the funds to purchase the brush grinder come from? It would come from the general fund.
No, Councilman, it would come from the solid waste operating fund.
So, it would come from user fees of the solid waste, and that would be your sewer bill, right?
Well, it would be the, it would come from the solid waste fund and the citizens...
Is that your garbage bill?
That's your garbage bill.
All right, that's my point. I think they need to know they would be paying for it for something to take care of what is a problem for them to begin with. It's not something that we're just going out and trying to cut down wood on the trails, et cetera, shoving it into the brush grinder, so we have a purpose.
Exactly.
Charlie.
Yep, Mayor, I just want to clarify, Stephanie, from your report, the $250,000 is the estimated savings by diverting, not putting it in the landfill, and you budget approximately $120,000 a year for the green waste processing. The numbers you quoted, I believe, are the new acquisition. If we found an appropriate used unit, it's in the mid threes. So again, 10 months or three years, it would be paid in full, and it's something that we've been providing and continue to provide every year. So, beyond year three, we would not be losing the $60,000, or in this case, $120,000 budgeted a year for that purpose.
Right, it would just be whatever maintenance costs we had and operator costs, because we do get an operator through the intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai County.
Thank you.
Jane.
Stephanie, the Morbark Model 3800 Wood Hog specs that were in our packet are a little difficult to read because the pictures came out all black. Can you explain how this piece of equipment differs from the chippers that are wood fuel crews?
Councilwoman Wilcox, this machine is much bigger. The chippers that you see running around, Street Maintenance has a wood chipper that they use as well as the fuels mitigation section. Those are just meant to do little jobs onsite so that you can reduce the size of the material to get it into a truck to bring it back to the transfer station. This is actually like a commercial application. It's much bigger, handles a lot more green waste, and it goes all day long when it's running. It's not just a little intermittent process.
All right, thank you.
Think the size of a semi-truck trailer.
Yeah, Mayor, I've seen these things in action. These suckers are monsters. I mean, you just throw trees into them and it chops them up into nothing. It's, basically, you take the 18-wheeler, lay it flat, and then this thing just goes to grind, and it's something to watch, really. Is there any way to partner with the county in doing this? And maybe, it sounds like they're having trouble keeping up with capacity as well. Would they be willing to like throw in half and we throw in half and have one big facility with lots of storage space where we could maybe cooperate and give a great benefit to our citizens? Because I know they're gonna be looking for money this, next year, too.
Mayor Potem, I could have my solid waste superintendent contact the county and see if they would like to have any kind of discussion along that lines. I know they travel around to various places, so they haul that brush grinder around to where they need it. I don't know how much their need would be right here locally, but we can definitely have those conversations.
Okay, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Stephanie, while you're talking to the county, is it possible to put together a mock-up as to what it would cost the average garbage customer in the city of Prescott on their monthly fee to go get one of these?
Councilman Lamerson, at the present time, the solid waste fund is healthy, and so really, I don't see increase to their fee anytime in the foreseeable future. Right now, we're looking at the cost of the program. We're getting better numbers, how much we actually are processing. We put a scale on the bucket of the loader so we could measure how many tons we're processing so we could actually put a cost with it. But the cost of the chipper, there's enough in the fund balance at present that we could buy it outright, and it shouldn't have an impact on the monthly fee for the customers.
Okay, I'm glad you said that, because here again, I think that's something that we need to discuss at the budget meeting, if indeed this is something that we can do that would potentially save the customers of the solid waste division money over the longevity and provide the city with a upgraded service. That almost sounds like one of those elusive six basic services that we're responsible for. So, thank you.
Mayor, I just want to add on to that, you know, too, I think Stephanie kind of alluded to that in her packet presentation, but this isn't waste anymore. I mean, we're producing with this machine, we'd produce a saleable product if we wanted to, and you know, with cooperations with other sections of the private sector, I mean, this could be mixed in with manure, this could be mixed in with all kinds of things and make a mulch. So, you know, garbage isn't garbage anymore. It can produce money and revenue stream for the city.
Sounds like somebody in the garbage business. That sounds great.
I'd have to leave if it was, Jim.
Stephanie, I think one of the things that might have got lost, Jim, was kind of referring to the waste that is picked up by the, in the residential areas. That's a part of the garbage bill. But when you take, when the commercial haulers take this waste, they pay dearly at the transfer station in order to drop this off, so probably, this would be an enterprise account of its own if you wanted to tie it down that close, yeah.
Mayor, yes, anyone who crosses the scale out at Sun Dog pays $59 a ton if they're bringing in a pure green waste load, which is how we like it, because then we just have them go put it on the pile for processing. But yeah, there's net revenue in this endeavor.
Yeah, I've had some complaints from them, so you're getting a good buck, yeah. Anyone else?
No.
Public? Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve the rental of a horizontal brush grinder on a monthly basis from Dodd Diesel Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Great, thank you, Jim. Motion made in second, it vote please.
Passes unanimously.
You when you're ready.
Item 2E, approval of amendment number two to city contract number 2013-029A2, Zone 27 Reservoir and Piping Project with CLM Earth Movers LLC in amount not to exceed $120,000 and authorizing the city attorney to enter into a settlement and release agreement with the contractor dismissing the pending litigation with prejudice prior to issuing payments against the amount of the contract increase.
Good afternoon, Henry.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. Henry H. Public Works. The Zone 27 Reservoir and Piping Project consists of construction of a 1.25 million gallon tank and related pump station and piping. During construction, additional costs were incurred by CLM in the areas of excavation and unsuitable soil. Generally, for projects, we have anywhere from 10 to 15% contingency because there are a lot of unknowns. In this case, we had only 3% contingency. If we had 10% contingency, probably would not even be a need to be here before you. So today, we are asking for your approval for an amendment to $120,000 for this project. And city staff have confirmed that the additional work completed by the contractor, CLM, that something was needed for the project. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel.
Mayor, I'm just glad this is resolved. Henry, thank you. Appreciate it, and everybody that was involved in it, glad to get this one off the table.
Is this facility now in operation?
No, sir. It'll be completed in about two months.
No counsel? Comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move to...
Go ahead, go ahead, Jim. Mayor, move to approve amendment number two to city contract number 2013-029A2 with CLM Earth Movers LLC in an amount not to exceed $120,000 with payments against the amount of the contract increase contingent upon execution of a settlement and release agreement by both parties and authorizing the city attorney to sign the said statement and release agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made in second, it vote please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Item F.
Item F, adoption of resolution number 4272-1481, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona through its Department of Transportation, authorizing the acceptance of a federal aid highway program surface transportation plan grant for design and construction of the Government Canyon Bridge on Overland Road.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, Ian.
This item is to authorize an IGA with the state of Arizona through the Department of Transportation to accept a federal aid surface transportation plan grant for the design and construction of the Government Canyon Bridge on Overland Road. The bridge was built in 1929, and it's been, yeah, it's pretty old. It's been identified through routine inspections as being structurally deficient and obsolete due to the narrowness of the roadway and is required to be replaced. The city, as owner, is obligated to replace the bridge, which is estimated to cost $1.25 million. In an effort to offset these costs, Public Works has pursued a federal aid highway program grant and been successfully awarded, won for $1 million. This $1 million is the maximum amount allowed under the program and will cover nearly 80% of the total cost to replace the bridge. In order to accept and administer the federal funds, ADOT will act as the city's agent, administering the design and overseeing the construction bidding of the project. The city will be responsible to pay ADOT project management and design review fees. We will pay the required city matching fund of 5.7% and any construction costs above the $1 million federal cap. That total cost is estimated to be $279,090. The city's current fiscal year budget, fiscal year 15, includes a quarter million dollars in the Government Canyon Project, which was previously budgeted to pay for the design portion of the bridge when we had to cover all the costs of the construction. The difference of $27,090 will be budgeted when the project goes to construction. Staff is recommending that council move to adopt the resolution approving the IGA, formally accepting the grant funding of $1 million and authorizing the city and ADOT to work together to design and construct the bridge. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Jim.
I don't have a question. I do have a comment, though. Ian, I would like to thank you and the staff for going to whomever you went to, I presume it was through the state and federal government, to procure some monies that we also pay into those two governmental agencies to bring it back to Prescott for public health and safety. The bridge is unsafe, that particular part of the infrastructure here is unsafe and needs to be fixed. So, thank you very much, and extend that to your other people that work with you, that I, for one, am very, very happy that you went out and got this kind of grant.
Certainly, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I just had some exciting times on that bridge growing up, too. It's fun. I'm glad my friend was driving a Subaru, because my car wouldn't have fit, but I mean, it was too skinny when the Model As were there. So, thank you for pursuing this. Thanks for getting the federal money, which is our money, like Mr. Lamerson said, just coming back to us. So, this is a good project, and I think it's gonna help us be safer. Even though it services most of the county, it is in the city, so I'm glad to see it go forward.
Mine is a question. I've been following, in a loose way, the engineering costs of several of our projects this year, and generally, they've been running in the 10% range. This one looks like it jumped, we're anticipating it's gonna jump to 25%. Is there a reason for that?
You mean the design cost of $250,000? So, the $250,000 was an estimate, could have been high. However, you know, with bridge, reconstruction of a bridge, it's a little more detailed than just a roadway or a typical project, so the costs for design are higher. Again, though, we hadn't had, they had just gone out for a request for services, for professional services. When we found out we were gonna get the money, and that kind of complicated things and stopped things, and so we, it was just a budgeted amount to cover what could occur, but it wasn't the actual design amount.
We're not showing our hand.
Yeah, and the other thing is, with the budgeted amounts in the IGA, those are estimates, engineer estimates. We would certainly hope that those costs come in lower when we go through the process of bidding, and so that's our anticipated maximum amount that we would pay. We could see the design costs coming lower, the construction coming lower.
But the percentages that we pay will be the same percentages regardless of what the construction costs command.
Yeah, we'll pay a flat rate fee of about $30,000 for the ADOT administration of the design and the construction, which basically, they're running the entire project for us because they know the federal system and it's required. And then we'll pay 5.7% match on the $1 million. So, they'll provide us $1 million total, whatever the total construction is. That $1 million will represent 94.3% of the money, and we'll pay 5.7%. Anything above, we will pay as well, and that's estimated to be $279,000. If it comes in lower, the savings to the city will happen first. That will be our savings.
Last question. When did that area come into the city?
Councilman Kukunio, or Mayor Potem Kukunio?
I don't remember it being in the city, that's why I asked. The Government Canyon was not in the city.
And I think it stops like just a few hundred yards past that bridge.
It sure does. It just goes just past the bridge to the entrance of a little housing tract, and it ends. So basically, we're mainly serving the county areas, but it's our road, it's our responsibility.
Okay. Comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4272-1481.
Second.
Motion made in second, it vote please.
Passes unanimously.
G.
Item 2G, adoption of resolution number 4273-1482, supporting the development of United States Bicycle Route 79 through central Arizona and the city of Prescott.
Yes, so this item will adopt another resolution. It supports the development of United States Bike Route 79 through Prescott, and it will authorize staff to designate the route with signing. The U.S. Bike Route System is a bicycle-based transportation system that is used by cyclists to travel state to state and is supported by the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, that's ASHTO, and ADOT. USBR promotes bicycle tourism, and ADOT and ASHTO have contacted Prescott, requesting the city's support and official designation of Route 79, which is a north-south corridor crossing the center of the state and going through the city. Public Works has reviewed the proposed route, which will use from the north to the south Willow Creek Road, Whipple Street, Monizuma Street, and Whitespar to travel through the city and found it to be suitable. The majority of these routes travel on city streets, which should... The majority of these routes travel on city streets, which already have bike lanes or are designated as bike routes. Only a small section of Monizuma Street, from Sheldon Street to Whitespar, the top of the hill by the curve, is undesignated. However, this downtown area is a bicycle tourist destination and is the most logical route for reaching the south end of the city. Approval of the resolution will result in signing of the designated route, and the cost of the signs is anticipated to be less than $2,500 at or less than $2,500 paid for by the transportation services within Public Works. Staff is recommending that council adopt Resolution 4273-1482, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I just got a problem with this, as far as designating a stretch of road that, inviting people to puddle on it, that really doesn't have a bike lane on it, correct? For a chunk of it.
Portions of it do not have bike lanes, yes.
It's like inviting people to go swimming in Watson Lake when it's not safe to swim. I'm not advocating a citywide overhaul at this point in time, I'm just looking at this specific incident, and it just seems like we're inviting something that we can't otherwise support, given this dangerous stretch of road. Your feelings in an engineering way?
Well, I would say that, you know, this is a nationwide route system for people who are traveling cross-country, all over rural, primarily rural roads, highways, interstates, things like that. Whenever possible, certainly, they're going to divert them to roads and streets that have facilities. You know, it's preferred, I'm sure, that all those be signed bike routes, or even better yet, maybe off-street paths. But the fact is that that's nearly impossible. You cannot bike across this country and stay on roadways that have bike lanes. And so the majority of these people are going to be coming down, for instance, the route goes right from Grand Canyon down 89. They try to avoid, you know, major interstates, but they basically take a lot of highways that don't have any designations. They'll have a route system so they can, you know, follow along and go the right way. But regardless of whether we adopt it or not, they're still going to be there. They're still going to ride these routes because they have to. And so when you look at it coming through Prescott, they're already doing that currently. I mean, we have Bike Across America, they come through. And so, you know, it is what it is. They're going to ride on shoulders, they're going to ride on roads without facilities, and it's perfectly legal for them to do that, and it's not inherently unsafe. That would be my opinion. It's not inherently unsafe to ride on roadways. Unfortunately, it could be better.
Roadways are unsafe just because you've got traffic on them. I mean, whether you're on a bicycle, pedestrian, motorcycle, car, truck, there's dangers involved. But to invite this on, you would feel comfortable to have a bicyclist or to say, okay, just be careful when you're taking this stretch of road?
Yeah, I reviewed the route, and I'm recommending that you approve it. So yes, I believe that it's a fine route, and it's recommended by staff.
Okay. Jean?
Thank you, Ian and Henry, for bringing this forward. I heartily support it. I think it'll be a great thing to guide bicyclists through the town that we love and a place where we encourage bicycling or we encourage bicycle events at any rate. I think this resolution is very timely, following the recent death of Amber Harrington on a section of this designated highway. It's a reminder that Prescott needs to do more and do a better job of providing for bicycle safety on pavement. And it's safety not just for the bicyclist, but it's for the drivers as well. So I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to examine more thoughtfully what we can do with existing streets as they are. How can we make them safer? We can take this segment, which includes some nice wide sections of Monizuma. If you're standing at the Safeway and looking down the hill, that's a very nice wide section of street. And unfortunately, some of the worst sections of streets in Prescott to ride a bicycle on Willow Creek Road. I get more complaints about that section of the road than anything else. There is a bike lane there. It's narrow. There's an asphalt lip that forces bikes into a concrete curb, and I've even had numbers, a number of calls from drivers who have noticed that the bicyclists are forced into the driving lane at certain points, or especially when they're trying to pump up the hill. Their bicycles veer to the right and they veer to the left, and they come very close to the cars as they're in the driving lane. So what I'd really like to see, and I'd like formal direction from this council to staff, is to go along this entire segment and evaluate how we can change it, put in bike lanes, put in traffic safety and bike safety signage. I think the signage you're talking about for this resolution, Ian, will probably just be more like a symbol to guide bikes along this route. But I think this is an opportunity to put in signs reminding the drivers, there's a three-foot separation rule, reminding bicyclists about what their rules are with respect to driving or riding in the flow of traffic. What I am proposing is an amendment to this resolution, and I would like to pass that out for the council's consideration. And I am, I know we need public comment, but I am prepared to make a motion when we get to that point, that would include this amendment, changing the fifth whereas to state, whereas the city of Prescott has duly considered the proposed route and found it to be a suitable route through the central Arizona corridor and desires that the route be formally designated so that it can be appropriately mapped, and I would add the word signed, and evaluated for bicycle safety enhancements. And then add a new Section Three, which is clear direction to staff to do that. Section Three, that staff is directed to evaluate and recommend for council approval in FY 15 or FY 16, additional bike safety enhancements such as solid white lines and bike symbols, designated bicycle lanes, traffic safety signs, slower speed limits, narrow driving lanes, and a street maintenance program that covers the full pavement width. Now, these are just some suggestions. The word "such as" is very key here. I know that you have expertise, Ian, and we have access to a lot of expertise in the committee, in the community of bicyclists who would be willing to throw in their ideas about what we could do for that particular segment. But this resolution, my additions to the resolution would be clear direction to staff that we move forward at this time with this particular segment.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, thank you for reminding us all that in the state of Arizona, bicycles are a legal mode of transportation, and unless otherwise posted, can ride on any roadway in the state of Arizona. For example, you'll see postings sometimes on the highway that you can't ride a bicycle or be a pedestrian on that road. Well, there's a reason for it. It's not safe. Along with Councilman Lozelle, I agree that safety is a huge concern, and not just for bicycle riders, but for pedestrians, which we've seen some of that happen here, and automobile guys, because people don't drive prudently. A lot of them speed, a lot of them don't take into consideration of somebody else on the road. Also, sometimes they forget the demographic that we live in. A lot of the people here are elderly, and their sight perception, depth perception, their responses, et cetera, somewhat are challenged. So I am equally concerned over safety. But I do not see the harm in posting this bicycle route the way it's being proposed in that it's not mandating that the city try and retrofit every bit of road in the city of Prescott with anything but what it is. All we're doing is putting up signage that show people an easy way to traverse the community and get to where they're trying to get to. So I don't see any differentiation in this than you would for follow me, you know? So...
John?
Mayor, thank you, and Ian, thanks for the presentation. One of your comments stuck with me, that this is planned. What they're asking for is the city to essentially sign on, give its blessing, and ultimately, I'd rather have a seat at the table than not. You know, as far as Jean's proposal, the change to the fifth whereas, I don't have any objection to that. I think it should be properly signed. I think we should make sure that it's been evaluated so that anything that's reasonable that can be adjusted to it is adjusted. We're going to see the bicycles regardless of our action today. As far as Section Three goes, there's been a longstanding debate about bike lanes, bicycles in the roadway, multimodal paths, new growth versus existing streets, and I don't disagree that the conversation needs to move to the next level, which is, what is the city's policy going to be looking forward? I'm hesitant to include it in this resolution because I think there's too much work yet to be done with the Alternative Transportation Group and with our staff to identify what our policy should be going forward. I've got no problem giving clear direction to staff that during the budget process and the policy process of the budget, this should be an item we discuss and set a priority to it. But I think to put it in the resolution right now, I'd be hesitant. Certainly okay with the fifth whereas. That's where I'm at, at the moment.
Yeah. Chris? Yeah, Mayor, you know, I was ready to support the resolution. Had this, you know, we get our packets on Thursday. Having amendments dropped right at the last minute, I don't necessarily agree with. There's no time to think about it and really digest it. You know, my consideration would be, what is the cost? What are we going to have to do? Are we going to, I mean, there's a lot of work involved in the new Section Three, and I don't disagree with any of it, but, and I hate to put something off like this, but maybe we should yank this until these considerations, either send it through the way the resolution is, or yank it, try and get Jean's amendment into the resolution and bring it back, and we could do that relatively quickly, but just to have time to really think about it because it did come in last minute.
Well, the proposed amendment doesn't obligate the council to spend any money.
It simply gives direction to the staff to look at this particular section, evaluate it to see if there are some possible bicycle safety enhancements, and come back to the council with a recommendation. And the list I read is just examples. They may not be what our traffic engineer thinks is appropriate, or if he wants to ask the advice of the bicycle community, and we have an advisory committee set up, he can certainly do that, and then it would be ready to come back to council for some budgetary action.
This reminds me of the federal government adding things on to a resolution that I seemingly agree with, but adding these things on, I do not agree with, because I believe that we have a risk management department that needs to evaluate anything that has to do with changing road infrastructure and bicycle safety. To automatically put these in there doesn't do diligence to doing any of that. We need to have these as a separate item and not tag it on to something that's trying to get done across the state. So I don't support it.
And Steve, you're right, though. I mean, there's nothing in here that we really disagree with, but it's just being able to digest it that I have heartache with a little bit.
Process.
Yeah.
Just, Mayor, if I could, one comment. Yep. Going to the change to the fifth whereas, that's specific to this project, and, you know, Ian's had an opportunity to review the route, but certainly, I have questions about, you know, the curve on Monizuma to Whitespar with the new parking spots that have been installed. I think the one thing this does is it does give staff direction to go back through and not just put up route signs, but to evaluate the route. I don't have a problem with that. I think it actually improves the resolution based on what I'm seeing. Section Three, though, is where I agree with you, Steve, that we're talking about a bigger scale question across the entire community. That's where I have some heartburn about including it in this resolution. I certainly want staff to properly sign the route. I certainly want to make sure that we have evaluated it, to make sure that it's as safe as we can make it, because this route is coming. I'd rather it be safe than we just go with it. But Section Three, I can agree with the comments. I don't think we should add it at this point.
I just want to, at some point in time, Mayor, have a bigger discussion, because that bigger discussion has to do with liability to this community. When you automatically sign and project a piece of road infrastructure being used specifically for bicycle, it comes with a greater diligence in maintenance when it comes to getting the slough off the road that goes to the right and the left, which creates traffic hazards to bicycles. If we're going to do that, then it comes with a cost of doing business, and that cost is higher maintenance. So when I start talking about higher maintenance and the costs of those kind of things, our risk management people in the attorney's office need to look at these things and not simply just add them on, tie them into a resolution that I agree with.
One more.
Mayor, I just want to say, though, if we wanted to, I'd support putting, revisiting our bike policy on the agenda for a future discussion and maybe some talking points, and then maybe we could go forward from there.
Ian, I have a couple of questions. This group, whoever they are, have they been to Prescott? Did they pick out this route?
So ASHTO is the government agencies that is behind this, and they work in cooperation with A DOT. And A DOT's bike representative down in the valley certainly has been to Prescott and knows these routes. They review these routes, and they've mapped them. And so these routes are, today, you know, you can get a map of this, and you can go on Route 79, it takes you through the city of Prescott. So yes, are they from Prescott? Or do they live here? No, I don't believe they do, but they're out of the valley with A DOT, and so they're statewide coordinators of bike facilities, and they've reviewed this route, they know the route. And so they've sent a letter, basically, requesting that we formally, you know, accept and sign these routes.
Yeah. My question is this. You're trying to get from Monizuma and Sheldon, or maybe Monizuma and Willis, to Highway 89A and 89, and you're going by way of Willow Creek Road. It would seem, and a part of this write-up is to enhance tourism, motels, restaurants, business opportunities, and there's not a motel on that route. What would have been wrong with taking from Monizuma at Sheldon, going east on Sheldon, and taking 89 north by way of five motels, several restaurants, passing by Watson Lake, and still ending up at the intersection of 89 and 89A and turning east and going on towards Jerome?
Yeah, I would say that there would be nothing wrong with that, and if, I think that if we felt like that was the preferred route for the city of Prescott, and that was a safer route possibly, or had the best for us, then we could probably recommend that to them, and they might modify their route. I think they're in the process of engaging the municipalities, and so I think they would be open to that.
Well, I think it's something that probably should have been looked at. There was two options there. The other thing, I, we've had our agenda since Thursday of last week. I have a problem with the procedure, that at the last minute, we get something that, to me, totally changes the intent of this resolution. To add, I agree that change the whereas is not a big deal, but I think Section Three is a issue all of its own. That is going to take a lot of work and a lot of conversation and some time to develop that. You're talking about some major policy changes, and even though we're only asking to evaluate, it's still going to take a lot of staff time. So I agree. Jean, I will support the resolution if that's what we're trying to get done, to tell A DOT that we will be a partner. If we take a look at the route, I think that's important. And the fifth whereas, I don't have a major problem with that, but I do, the chair thinks it's not in the best way that we relate to each other, to get this new section totally dropped on us out of the blue at this minute. But you've got another shot here.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a problem with the process, too, when we get our agenda packets on Thursday, and I see something that needs to be changed. and I see something that needs to be changed. What's my alternative? Do I go around and shop each one of you with the change I need to, with a change I think is important?
You've only shopped three of us.
I know. That's the problem.
Two.
I don't want to be violating the open meeting law.
Yeah. No, we don't.
And I could have gone back to Henry or Ian and said, I think we should pull this and revise it, but that may not necessarily have worked either. And we'd be right back here with a resolution with language in it that you might not like. So I apologize for dropping this on you at the last minute, but we're in an open meeting, and I think it's the only way that we have to communicate with each other.
Mayor, I just wanted to kind of go off on this a little bit. Does it have to be, does this have to all be paved roads? Because when I look at this map, and I agree with Jean, going down Willow Creek Road would be really scary on a bicycle. When you come into town, I mean, we got the circle trail that encircles our city. Can it be hooked on to that, which would be safer and more scenic? Instead of going out Willow Creek Road, could this route be diverted to the Peavine, which is, once again, a lot safer, it's just bicycles, and it would get you to the same place you want to go, out 89A? Is there other alternatives that we can do that would actually maybe even enhance this route for bicycles coming up through Prescott?
I would say that, you know, none of those things are off the table. One of the things that's going on is, for instance, you know, the question about coming off a trail. That's a great idea, but a lot of these people are road bike users with large, you know, they've got those, all the stuff on them, and so they're, are they going to want to go on the Peavine Trail, which is primarily a cinder gravel trail? I don't know. Those are valid questions, though. Was this route the best? In my opinion, this is the best route. I will say that. Because if we're talking about safety, and we're saying that we don't like Willow Creek, I can't imagine anyone liking the Dells. I mean, if you go 89, you've got to go through the Dells, 50 mile an hour, 55 mile an hour cars next to you. And so if you were to ask me, do I want Williamson Valley Road? Do I want 89? Or do I want Willow Creek? I choose Willow Creek as the traffic engineer. So, you know, all I had to do was look at the routes that we have, which ones have the best bike facilities, and then recommend that route. But if that's not suitable to council, then that's, you know, you're the policymakers, and you're the ones accepting this designation. But certainly, I can go back and request them to look at any ideas that we have, whether or not they want, if they just say, hey, we're going to move forward with our map the way it is, and I guess the city doesn't do that, I don't know. And they might say, hey, that's a great idea. So that's kind of where we are today. We're, that's the route. I reviewed it.
My only suggestion of my comment was, I've traveled that route since 1967, two to six times a day, and it's unusual if there's not bikers on 89. It's just, it's a fact, and there's two that come through at 6:30 every morning because I usually pass them, rain or shine. So it's obviously, they're used to riding, and they're very careful. So, but we can't legislate that. So whatever route is fine. Jim, you want to say?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with the mayor, and I don't know which other councilman that, you know, I don't ride a bicycle, so I can't really tell you which route's a good route. I don't have a problem adopting the resolution as written unless it negates the opportunity to reengage the ADOT with regards to signage, et cetera. There may be a better route. There may be one that's more acceptable for bicycle riders. I wouldn't know that. What I was given was this, and said, this is the proposed route, okay? I don't have a problem with signing the route that's being proposed. I assume somebody more familiar with bicycle traversing of the community did the proposal than me. So I don't have a problem with the signing. I understand it doesn't obligate the city to go retroactively, stripe every road in the city of Prescott or anything else. What it does is say, we're just going to put these signs up to help people get through the city easier. I have no problem with that, as proposed.
I'd just like to just make it clear, so if you were to adopt the resolution as it's written, it doesn't necessarily change us from modifying things in the future. Certainly, we can work with ADOT. But what we're saying is, the proposed route that they're showing us and that we've reviewed, which we write in the resolution, goes down Willow Creek. It follows that route that they're showing, that that's the route that we agree to sign using, you know, their designated signs. And so I would say that this is not like, if we don't do it today, it's done forever. It's a courtesy thing that they're asking us to do to support this system. So it would be better not to pass it if you had doubts about the route, in my opinion, and then get it correct, and come back, and then sign the route you actually support, than to just do it just to say, well, it looks good, but maybe let's keep looking and move these signs. You know, it seems like a better idea to just hold off and then get it right.
Well, I appreciate that candor, too, because then I'm proposed to table this until we get the route that everybody's comfortable with. Evidently, there's a little bit of, I don't know what the right word would be, but a little bit of consternation with regards to the route as proposed for various different reasons. So, and I don't have a problem proposing, to table it.
And Jim, I would support that as well. I think we should narrow down the question about the route, bring this back. Again, I don't have a problem with seeing the resolution change on the fifth whereas to show what Jean's recommending, have staff work on that, but otherwise, I would be in support of tabling. I know there's a lot of folks here that are in the bicycle community that are interested in this issue, but certainly, I think the mayor's question is a good one, and I'd like to make sure we adopt the right resolution.
Thank you, Charlie. Me, too.
And how are we going to work in the amendments into that discussion?
Only, my position would be to only work in the amendment to the fifth whereas, and that the recommendation on Section 3 be part of a policy discussion at a future date.
Jean, do you want to make a motion of its entirety and see where it goes?
Well, I'd like to hear public comment, actually.
But the public comment is going to be on what?
On our entire.
The amendment, or the motion, or the resolution that's on the, on the agenda? Because the others are not on the agenda.
Well, the entire discussion is appropriate for public comment.
Even your recommendations for the change?
If they wish to comment on it. I don't know that anybody would.
Alita. Well, Mayor, a couple of issues. The topic here is the resolution, which is Route 79, so the proposed amendments are generally, fall within that concept and are certainly available for discussion. They aren't, you know, we're not talking about a wholly different issue that would be outside of what was noticed up. The other issue is, if there is a tabling, or if there is a motion to table, as a proceed, the rules basically are, if it's a procedural motion, that sort of quashes public comment. So you could certainly take public comment, but if there's a motion to table and a second, then there's really no comment on that. It simply is tabled until future date, when it comes back. And can I make one other comment?
I didn't hear a motion to table.
I didn't either. And I'd like to make one other comment just for future, and that is that the open meetings law does allow for council member, you know, for a council member to have a sort of, preferably a memo or a written document can be distributed to the remaining council of proposed changes to, no, before the meeting. In other words, prior to the meeting, once the agenda comes out, if there's a proposed change, that, a council member can communicate with the remainder of the council or through the staff, to remain of the council, and say, these are some proposed changes I want to make. The admonition there would be, don't have a discussion about it until the meeting. The other admonition would be, don't do it by email because it's too easy to respond, reply all, at least for some of you. But, but, you know, if a memo were sent out by one council member, either through staff or directly to the other council, to say, here are some proposed changes, that can be done prior to the meeting, as long as you don't have then a two-way discussion on those items. Wait till you get to the council meeting to discuss, maybe, and that maybe solves the problem of sort of these late issues coming up.
And Mayor, my only comment to what the city attorney just indicated is, we're talking about whether or not to designate a route through the city of Prescott by resolution. We're discussing tabling that to allow staff time to talk with ADOT, and that's it. This is not the broader discussion about bicycle improvements or safety in the community. It's about this resolution.
Right. And my point, just to be clear, was that the proposed section, or the fifth whereas and the proposed Section 3, I agree that the, it wouldn't be appropriate under open meetings laws to discuss those in substance. In other words, the value of improvements or the benefits, the upsides and downside of the benefits of those improvements, the public discussion really needs to be limited to, you know, the wording in Section 3 and whether that should be in or out, but not why, essentially. In other words, it should be very limited if you're going to talk about Section 3, the proposed Section 3.
Mayor, may I make a comment? In reading the resolution as it's written, I want to retract my statement in that it's actually written in a general way, which does not designate the route specifically. And so it basically says that the council supports the designation of the route as recommended, but it would allow leeway for us to work with ADOT even after adoption and before signing, to modify any part of the route we thought appropriate, because we do not designate the exact route. It references a recommended route, but it does not have the exact streets that we were mentioning. So I'd just like to make that correction. You know, that resolution as it stands does not designate those exact routes, just says that you support 79 and the signing of it. So we could, if it was your desire, modify the route with ADOT following the approval of the resolution. That's all I'd like to say.
What I've interpreted this from the first time I looked at it was, we are agreeing that it's to our benefit to have a route through Prescott. And I don't think there's any hitches on that. And if that's what we need to do today, we should do that and bring these other issues next council meeting, if we so desire, and start the process. Jean, do you have a comment?
Well, I certainly would like to see council support and direction to Public Works to put some focus on this segment since we're allowing it to be designated, or you may be allowing it to be designated as a nationally advertised bicycle route, and it would be an opportunity to showcase what Prescott can do to retrofit its streets.
And I think, I think we all understand that. I will be happy to, on the next council agenda, that'll be in February. The first will be a workshop, and that's an appropriate place to start the process on this, is that we put Jean's recommendation on that agenda and start the process.
That would be February 10th.
Will that work?
That would be fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Then I need a motion for what you want to approve today.
Mayor? I have a specific comment, and Ian, I appreciate your interpretation, but I read the resolution specifically. It says, "The city of Prescott has duly considered the proposed route and found it to be a suitable route through the Central Arizona Corridor and desires that the route be formally designated." I will not vote on this today, given the questions that have been raised.
Well, is there a motion to table it?
Mayor, that's where I was going.
Sorry, Jim. Thank you.
I make a motion to table the resolution as presented so that we can work some of this out through the study, or the study session, for the lack of a better thought process, workshop, at this time. I think this needs to be postponed. Let us talk about it. Let us get ironed out what we actually want to agree to. I agree with Charlie with regards to it. It kind of spells it out. So that's what I would propose. So I make a motion to table this.
And I would second the motion with the goal of getting this thing passed as quickly as we can with the modifications.
Okay. So if it comes back, then it would be up for a vote at that time?
Table to a date, Sergeant?
Well, the only motion that's going to come back is the motion that's on the table at this moment. Any changes would be made at the following.
My question would be, should we hear, should we hear from the public before we come back to a meeting in case there's changes that have to be made?
The public on this basis, if it's tabled today, there'll be no discussion with the public.
Okay.
The discussion will be when it comes back on an agenda.
And the question there, Mayor, would be that February 3rd is the study session where you're anticipating discussing the bigger picture issues of bicycle safety and tabling this item to consideration on February 10th.
Jim made the motion.
Well, I did make the motion, and I'm prepared to reserve my motion, and hopefully Charlie would be prepared to reserve his second if indeed the majority of the council wants to get public response before we table. I personally, I want to work all these things out. I heard too many things.
Did we have a second on the motion?
There was a second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Jean, before we go there, do you, what part do you want to bring to the study session, the workshop, the first week? And do we want to anticipate from that workshop that there will be an action motion that would be brought the following week?
I would like to see, brought to the work session, consideration of directing Public Works staff to devote some attention to this post-segment.
Okay. Manager of questions, looking at the new Section 3 and what it encompasses, how much time will staff need from a workshop first Tuesday in February to do this work and bring it back to a, the results to an action meeting?
Well, I think, I think the question is, are we dealing with words, or are we dealing with surveys of physical conditions? You know, I mean, that's.
Very honestly, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, but that is the question. If, you know, the February 3rd, obviously, is a week from today, that's cutting it a little tight to be able to develop materials and so forth when we publish agendas on, you know, two days from now, which is part of the problem.
Well, it could very easily, after the workshop, the council could decide that they're not interested in doing these things. So probably the workshop would be the time to, by consensus, decide whether we want to go any further or not.
Well, if, you know, for discussion purposes, if, if the agenda item for February 3rd simply sets forth what is being proposed for the resolution and really what's associated with that, you know, if it is to add the whereas, the fifth whereas, and then also for council and public comment, discussion of how to address the route itself, or addressing the route itself, whether it should be Route A or Route B, and then what should be done about evaluating Route A and Route B. I mean, I think that we can describe that in general terms, so to provide a basis for February 3rd, you know, in the next two days. I think we can get on that agenda and get that out, and I think with the benefit of the discussion today and the understanding that we're talking about as much as process as content, I think that certainly you could have a productive discussion. And in terms of, you know, the agenda for February 3rd, let me just say that you have a presentation by the library, mid-year budget update, Public Works capital program update, open space update, board and commission reports, so this would be in addition to that.
Okay. Bring your lunch. That work for you?
Well, if I understand you correctly, Craig, the February 3rd discussion would simply be to explain what would be involved for staff to evaluate this segment in terms, in order to recommend bicycle safety enhancements?
Right. Councilwoman, you have proposed that the resolution be modified. There are two parts to that proposal that you set forth. There are two parts to that proposal that you set forth. One is a statement of intent in the whereas, the, the other is a, effectively a process to be followed to evaluate and look at enhancements and so forth. You know, we have a traffic engineer, and he, he can be prepared a week from now to tell you what, what that, what that would involve. In terms of, you know, then, from the discussion today, there has been a, you know, a question of what is the route? You know, what, what is the route that the council will support if there is a, if there is a route which the council wants to specify? So that is, you know, we can certainly outline what the process for evaluation of that route would be. I'm not suggesting that we're going to be able to come back next week and have maps and videos and anything else, you know, to, to have a fully informed discussion of Route A versus Route B or Route C.
I don't think the route's that big a, a bigger deal. That will evolve, and it, we can adopt something there, and it could be changed if, if it was shown that it was not safe. We have a motion on the floor to table this?
Hold on a minute, Marlon, because if I heard Ian correctly, that's on the table right now, that by adopting this resolution, it doesn't obligate the city for that route. We can modify the route between today and next week.
Well, you made a motion, thank you.
I, I did. But I want to make sure that I have that clarification. I want to hear from the attorney. Mr. Attorney, the language that Charlie was concerned about in this proposal, does that obligate us to stick into the, the route that has been suggested by our engineer and agreed to by the state of Arizona?
The resolution talks about a, the proposed route, but the, the, if you look at the enactment provisions, the only enactment is the council expresses its approval and support for the development of US Bicycle Route 79. Staff, staff is authorized to officially designate the route accordingly. I don't think it, I don't think that the, the route, you're locked into a particular route by adopting the resolution.
Therefore, I withdraw my move to table this, because I'm just as happy with the way it's proposed.
Mayor?
Withdraw your second.
Mayor, I withdraw my second, and I move to table it. Mr. Palladini, I take the rule of thumb, if I got hit by, if we all got hit by a bus tomorrow, somebody comes and pulls this, the whereas is the intent behind the enactment. And it says whereas, specifically the proposed route, and we find it to be suitable. I hate when we have to drag our feet on something, and we've been doing this for 40 minutes on something that is a positive, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're taking the necessary steps, so that we are giving clear direction to staff, that we are making the best decision possible, and that we are doing something that's good for the community. So I move to table the item until this can be considered.
Do you have a second?
I have comment.
Go.
You know, this is, this resolution is a good thing. I think we could pass this resolution today, we'll modify it however we want, and out of respect and for Ms. Harrington and the bicycling community, we bring up Gene Wilcox's recommendations for further discussion by council and do it at a completely separate thing, pass the resolution today, put it on the agenda item which we discussed, and then we can move on.
The resolution at is, as it is written?
As it is written.
There's a motion.
There's a motion on the floor for table.
There's no second.
But there's no second.
And did we get a second to that motion?
No.
No. Motion died for the lack of a second.
And I don't know if this helps or hurts the conversation. However, there are two words in order to, to address Council, Councilman Arnold's concerns. The, the fourth and fifth whereas is that, say, the proposed USBR 79 and the proposed route. I think if you change the to A, then it gives you flexibility to actually determine what the route's going to be later on. In other words, it makes it less, because there is, there is a language that talks about the proposed route, but there's no attachment, there's no, obviously, the record's going to show this map, but if that helps-
There is a map.
There is a map, but it's not really-
But it's very difficult to read.
And, and it's not quite, it's not attached to the resolution. So in other words, if the council wants to adopt a, a resolution supporting a route and wants to continue to discuss the exact route of that route, then, then changing the two words they, the to a would allow you to do it, adopt the resolution. In other words, it's a, it's a, it's a indication of support of this concept without specifics being dealt with.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the resolution, changing the word the to A, and accepting as it is, and putting Councilman Wilcox's ideas on a future agenda item.
Second.
I got, I still have a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just don't know what the rush is on the vote today, when we can do it next week, and Ian can research it with the state, to change the route, if we're going to change the route. I think we need to make a determination whether we're going to change the route or not.
Well, I don't think there's a, is really a defined route, because if you just look at this map and try to determine that that is the route that the resolution refers to.
So we're just going to agree-
Where would that be?
We're just going to agree to sign each when the route is determined.
Unfortunately, though, that, from the cover sheet, where it says recommended route, it specifically defines it. I mean, we're talking about altering the resolution, which is what this all started with, and Ian's indicated there's no need to vote on this today. So I don't want to shoot from the hip and just go do something that we can change later. That sounds like Washington.
Well, I do, I do believe if there is a motion, and I think I heard a second, but I'm not sure if I did.
I, I heard a second.
Okay.
So there is a motion, but it's seconded.
And in it-
And we're going to go to public discussion of that motion.
Okay.
Who was the second?
Who, who seconded?
Who was the second?
You did.
No, I made the motion.
You made the motion.
No, I didn't, I think you seconded.
Oh, then Chris made it, but I want to hear from the public, too.
Okay. Come on down.
I know.
Now, if it's, if it's already been said, you can't repeat it.
Well, I, I, I myself, I was hearing some mumbling from the crowd, I saw some people get up and walk out. If this is a public hearing, there needs to be public comment. I think even if you say you want to table it, there should be some public comment, because people have come a long way to do that. I would suggest that you look into the possibility of talking them into Route 79 and a Route 79A, if you think there's a better route. My understanding is that the proposed route has actually really been in use for quite some time, so it's not something that just came out off the top of their head. And they're, they're saying, we want to put signs along this route and designate the route that already exists, and we want the city to go along with them. Now, if you want to say, we think this route would be better, I'd pass this resolution, use the A instead of the, and, and say, well, as long as you're signing this route, Route 79, let's put this route here as 79A, so that people can come through town and stop at our restaurants and motels if they want to go this way, or they can go this usual route that they've been using. But the thing that was getting to me was it was looking like you guys were going to table this or some other way, do something with it, when probably several of these people have ridden their bicycles some distance to come make a comment on this.
Well, that's what we're in right now, it's why you're up here, is public comment.
It sounded like you weren't going to do a public comment.
No.
By the way, I skipped something. My name is Daniel Mattson, I live on Merritt Street, so anyone who wants to make comments, you're supposed to give your name and where you live.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Come on down.
My name's Rodney Burnap, I'm a local pastor. I live 2575 East Valentine, Prescott. This route's already been used for 20 years. This is the Adventure Cycling Route. Adventure Cycling runs from San Diego to Florida on 60. When they hit this area out here, Congress, they come up, it's called the Detour to go to the Grand Canyon. We get 4,000 to 6,000 bicycle riders every year riding this route.
Yeah. Is it a published route?
It is.
Okay.
And this is a route that thousands of people come through and spend their money.
Yeah.
They don't have to go past a motel to find a motel to go sleep at night.
Okay.
They're tired, they'll find a place.
Yeah.
And this needs to be put on the map. We're going to be part of a bicycle route system, a highway system, that's connected with all the other states.
Yeah. Ian, do we, do you have a map that shows us?
Yes, but it's a Adventure Cycling Route that's been used for 20 years, so it's not something that just started yesterday.
This one certainly doesn't give detail.
Oh, there's, there's going to be something like 48,000 miles of rail. I've got over 40,000 miles of bicycle touring, so I know what I'm talking about. The bags on a bike are called panniers, by the way, so when you're carrying luggage, you're carrying your camping gear in panniers.
Let's see what we got.
These routes are going to eventually attach to routes in, in Utah, and then from Utah, we're going to connect to the other states. I mean, it's going to be a highway system for bicycles. We need that, it's time. It's time for us to do this, guys.
Yeah, he's, he's referring to Route 90, I think, that comes here, and then at Congress, it veers off and goes up 89 on the green route.
Okay. When they go from San Diego, it's called the Southern Tier Route. It's like the Appalachian Trail for bicycle touring, but it runs through Arizona, and then when they want to go to the Grand Canyon, they take this other route. So we get probably 4,000 to 6,000 bicycle touring folks coming through here every year.
Yeah.
Even high school groups.
Yeah, what I think we're talking about, we're trying to define what streets.
But this is the same route, the, the one that's proposed today.
Okay.
It's the same information. They come up White Spar, they come right through the center of town, and they go out, they go out towards Chino, Paulden, they hit 40, which they're allowed to take, and they go up to Williams, and then they go to the Grand Canyon.
But when you say go out, do they go out Willow Creek, or do they go out 89?
They go out Willow Creek, I believe.
Okay. So if that's, if that's the defined route, that's what we need to know.
But, I mean, 4,000 to 6,000 people already coming through every year?
Yeah, well, I see a lot-
Even more.
That's what I'm saying, I see a lot on 89, with the flags flying behind the bike and, and the-
Trailers sometimes.
Yeah.
I mean, these are guys and gals that are-
So obviously, they, they go several streets.
Yeah, and we're not limited to one route, but it's, it'd be nice to have it signed, so we know.
Okay.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Well, you'd know, you'd need to know which one to put the sign on.
Yeah.
Good. Anyone else, publicly?
Hi, my name is Sandra Smith, I live on 701 White Spar. I just have a question for Ian. You said you approved the route, but have you looked at bicycle riders riding along where they park, put in those new parking spaces, right close to the curve and the hill there, where White Spar and Monizuma meet?
Yeah, I'm aware of those parking stalls, so have I done a survey of that exact location? No, I have not looked at that exact location.
Because that's awfully tight for bicycles, with a hill and a curve together. I used to ride a bicycle a lot for transportation, so I'm a little acquainted. Another question is, how prominent are the signs going to be for drivers to notice?
I have a sample of the sign, and it's called out in the manual on uniform traffic control devices. They actually adopted this as an official United States bike route sign. So it's, it's called out, you know, by the federal government what we'll be using, and it's a black-on-white new sign, shows the bike symbol with the route designation. It's mandated to be used, so as far as-
So they would be visible enough for drivers to notice something different?
That's the one we're mandated to use. I would think that they have done testing to make sure that it's visible.
Because drivers don't always pay attention to other things on the roads, I've noticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down. Hello, Jim?
Jim, nap 200 Parker Road, Prescott. I also own ironclad bicycles. As far as the route goes, yes, there's things on it that, that we can do in our city to improve its safety, and I'm really encouraged to hear that this conversation might progress from this point on. Considering that route, the big problem is, is getting out 289 another way. As narrow as the bike lanes are on Willow Creek, there are bike lanes, there aren't bike lanes on Sheldon Street, and there aren't bike lanes on Gurley. I will note that this route, as it's proposed, passes four of Prescott's five bicycle shops. It passes by a number of hotels, including the St. Michael, Spring Hill, and the ones out White Spar. It passes campgrounds, and it passes a number of supermarkets and restaurants, so once they get to the center of town, they'll get directed for where to go eat, where to go stay, and I think I would like to see it go past my bicycle shop. Thank you.
Well, let's hope so. Thank you. Who's next?
Good afternoon, Mayor Kirkendall, members of council. I feel like a lot of what I came here to say has been covered in one way or another, so I'll try to kind of get off the script here. My name is Russ Willis, I live just a few blocks away at 309 East Willis Street. I came here in November and introduced myself to you as the then newly-elected president of Prescott Alternative Transportation. I'm here today largely in an individual capacity, although a lot of what I would have to say is consistent with PAT's mission and values. If I understand the resolution correctly, what ADOT is asking is simply that the city agree that they have chosen a good route for long-distance touring bicyclists to get from here to there by way of Prescott, and maybe put up a few wayfinding signs, which I would say, incidentally, are meant to be visible primarily by cyclists who are trying to figure out, am I on the right road? They do not function as warning signs to motorists saying, big yellow diamond, watch out, there are bicyclists on the road. And of course, there are not many alternatives to come through Prescott from, you know, Jasper down to wherever, or vice versa, and no doubt Willow Creek is preferable to Route 89 in some ways. And I don't want to get into what sounds like negative comments, I'm all for bicycle touring and, and for wayfinding signs for people who are already, as Pastor Raymond mentioned, they're already doing it. But if we can get people from all over the country or the world coming through here on bicycles, it, it helps the tourism economy, and it, and it may help, it may help public awareness of the presence of bicyclists on the roadways. I say I'm speaking as an individual, I use a bicycle for transportation, I don't own a car, so that, that makes me different from maybe some other people, but it also makes me hyper-aware of some things. The Interstate Bike Route is a project of a nonprofit out of Missoula, Montana, called Adventure Cycling, and they've partnered up with ASHTO, as, as has been mentioned. Adventure Cycling is a 501(c)(3) organization, but it gets more than two-thirds of its revenue from organizing bike tours and selling maps. It's what they do. Adventure Cycling acknowledges that some of the resistance they get here and there to identifying and mapping these routes is concern from state or local governments that somebody might get, they might get sued if somebody gets hurt. You know, the city might have immunity here under, you know, ARS 12-820.03, I don't know. That really should not be the point. The point is this, if we're going to invite people to come into Prescott on touring bicyclists, we ought not to tell them that the roads are safer than they actually are, and/or we ought to improve conditions, as has been suggested here today, for safety on those roads. Again, I would say our priority ought to be to make local roads safer for people who actually live here. Public Works says the proposed route is quote-unquote "suitable," noting that there are striped bike lanes on most of the route, the downtown segment is a bicycle tourist destination, and so on. And frankly, Adventure Cycling has set the bar pretty low. Only two of their eight criteria for selecting routes have anything at all to do with safety. One, they suggest, but they don't require, that you meet ASHTO standards for design, planning, and operational criteria for development of bicycle facilities, which are outdated anyway, they haven't been changed since 1993, and they're markedly inferior to guidelines that have been developed more recently by the National Association of City Transportation officials. Two, they suggest, but they do not require, that you quote, "consider appropriate combinations of low daily traffic, low truck traffic, wide paved shoulders, lane striping, adequate side distance, and traffic speed in order to be bicycle-friendly," end of quote. It's one of their criteria. I hardly need to stand here and tell you that Willow Creek meets exactly none of these criteria. Yes, there are striped bike lanes, but they are much narrower than even ASHTO specifications, hard up against a tall curb. They're filled with debris, broken glass, broken pavement, and they run right through storm drains, and they're just inches away from heavy automobile and truck traffic running considerably above the posted 40, 40 mile an hour speed limit. And of course, there are no- And of course, there are no striped bike lanes or any meaningful signage or pavement markings on Monizuma and White Spar heading south into, out of town. And we've just seen, we've just seen what can happen when you get onto that wide downhill stretch approaching Copper Basin. If you want long-distance bicyclists, tourists to come through Prescott on these roads, it seems to me you have an incentive to improve them. There's no reason anyone should be going more than 20 or 25 miles an hour in an urban area anyway. On Willow Creek, we're talking about only five or 10 minutes additional driving time on a seven-mile stretch from Iron Springs to the highway. But simply posting lower limits isn't going to get the job done, even with occasional enforcement. You can't be there every minute enforcing. Ultimately, we need to redesign the roads. I know this is a big-picture statement. We need to redesign the roads, narrow the travel lanes so that it's just not practical to go 45 miles an hour through there, and time the signals so that there's no incentive to go that fast. And create bulbous and refuge islands so the pedestrians can get across the more complicated intersections. And widen the bike lanes and create buffers between the bike lanes and the travel lanes so the bicyclists can actually feel safe using these roads. I know that's not all going to happen overnight. But some bits and pieces of it can actually happen soon. And PAT has expressed repeatedly, we're more than willing to sit down with the city and try to figure out what's reasonable to try to accomplish in the near term. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie's going to need to leave as, as soon as we can get him out of here. Let's, we're going to be talking about this at another day. Let's go ahead and get, since we have a motion in a second, let's see where this goes. And, and move along to the...
No, it's a motion to approve.
The motion I have is Councilman Cook, you know, move to adopt resolution, the resolution and change the word "the" to "a," and putting Councilwoman Will Cox's recommendations into consideration at the next meeting. And then I have Councilmember Lamerson seconding.
And, and Jim seconded, yeah. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Let's vote, please.
Passes 6 to 1, Councilman Lizelle DeSantis.
Mayor, with your permission, I'm going to shift over to my phone for the balance of the meeting. I'm sorry, but wasn't expecting us to get quite this late.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you very much. And the clerk's going to call me now, and I'll keep it on mute unless I need to speak.
Thanks for hanging on. Let's go to item H.
Item 2H, approval of amendment number 2 to city contract number 2013-061A2 with GE Fuller Hydrology and Geomorphology Incorporated for management of the Willow Creek Local Levy Partnership and Levy Mapping Plan in the amount of $24,795 FEMA grant funding.
Should I say good evening, mayor and council? Honorable mayor and council, I'm Jeff Lowe, capital project manager in Public Works. This is an item for amendment number 2 to the city contract number 2013061A with J.E. Fuller Hydrology and Geomorphology for management of the Willow Creek Local Levy Partnership and Levy Remapping Plan in the amount of $24,795 grant-funded. The scope of work includes detailed two-dimensional floodplain modeling and collaborated meetings with the city, county, FEMA, and Arizona Department of Water Resources. The levy modeling will be comprised of identifying the most effective way of remapping the landward side of the Willow Creek levy, which is owned by the Gardens at Willow Creek Homeowners Association and Willow Rigs Development Company. The plan will guide the completion of the Willow Creek Flood Study, which is part of the original contract. To give you some background, which is kind of a long background, the Willow Creek Flood Study was initiated in 2010 as part of a citywide effort to update all the floodplain maps within our jurisdiction. Modeling of the reach that includes the Willow Creek levy is the last part of the study to, to be completed to enable FEMA to proceed with processing the physical map revision, which will update all the flood maps within our community. The privately-owned levy was constructed in various phases in conjunction with private residential and commercial development in the 1980s. It was originally adopted by FEMA in 1987 and recognized on the flood insurance rate map as providing 100-year flood protection to adjacent structures. Subsequent to Hurricane Katrina in 2005, FEMA essentially decertified all levies nationwide. To gain reaccreditation, levies have to be evaluated and shown to meet all minimum design and construction criteria. In 2006, the city entered into a provisional credit levy agreement with FEMA. Based on research and evaluation conducted since 2006, it became apparent that the privately-owned levy in its current state falls short of meeting recertification criteria. And it would take a significant expenditure of funds to retrofit the levy to meet recertification standards. There is no plan at this time to undertake such an effort. The current flood insurance rate map continues to reflect protection afforded by the levy. However, the protection is no longer recognized by FEMA. In the absence of detailed study data, FEMA typically takes the most conservative stance when remapping decertified levies and assumes inundation on the landward side to an elevation equal to the channel floodplain elevation. In this case, an estimated 141 structures would be situated in the floodplain. The intent of this effort, which is fully funded by FEMA, is to evaluate, discuss, and identify the most appropriate technique, technical approach for remapping the landward side of the levy. With a more careful effort, the number of structures to be remapped into the floodplain is anticipated to be reduced from 141 to 91, and that's just an approximate number. The benefit would be 50 structures or homes would not be obligated by flood insurance. Because the city is responsible for community floodplain management, floodplanes on both public and private lands are mapped. This does not obligate the city to participate in any future channelization or levy improvements, nor does it preclude such participation. The levy is on private property and is neither publicly owned nor within public maintained easement. I have provided a couple slides to kind of show you pictures of the levy and the FEMA That slide there, the, that's the current FEMA map that's adopted today. The darker shade area is the floodplain, 100-year floodplain. The lighter shade area where the levy is, is currently 500-year floodplain.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
We, the city of Prescott, since I've been on council, have got YAPI flood district monies and required by FEMA twice to rearmour this dike and this levy. At what time do we quit playing this game with these folks? As far as I'm concerned, it's a game. We've spent over $300,000 armoring this thing twice, and now it's coming back again. When does that all go away, or does it?
FEMA, it, well, if we decertify the levy, it'll go away.
Okay.
But, you know, you're putting people on the floodplain, too.
Well, that was armored to keep them out of the floodplain. And now, all of a sudden, we're saying, because FEMA gets a hair based upon Katrina, that now we're going to do something different again. And all the rules keep changing because you have somebody in Washington, DC that feels like they can do it.
There's been 10 different procedure memos since 2005 on levies.
And these people are as safe as anybody in Prescott, Arizona, that live on a creek?
Correct.
Thank you.
Here's a picture of a portion of the levy along Lorraine Drive. This is the far west side. The levy actually doesn't have the required freeboard. The 100-year floodplain's actually overtops the levy at that location, and you're required to have two to three feet of freeboard. Here's the, the berm side on the Willow Creek where the armoring is that Councilman Blair was talking about. Here's over by Fry's Shopping Center. This is, shows you that we have some penetrations into the levy. We have, I think we have five penetrations of levy where water could actually back up during a 100-year flood event and go into the landward side of the levy. This is the method FEMA would approach to put everybody in the floodplain in this particular scenario. They would just take the floodplain elevation in the wash and transfer the elevation across, and whoever's in the floodplain would end up being in the floodplain. And that ends up being about 141 structures. We're proposing, and this isn't, we haven't done it yet, this is a draft of the model, using a Flow 2D program, which is a 10-foot grid, and it gives a more accurate depiction of the floodplain. And what, you know, the floodplain's more likely going to be in the streets and in the open space areas, not necessarily where the homes are. So we're proposing to, to use that methodology with FEMA. So assuming you approve this, where do we go from here? We have a meeting with FEMA, county, Arizona Department of Water Resources, and we all provide documents on the preferred levy model. They give us a blessing to use that model. And we proceed with doing the model. We submit the model to FEMA, and FEMA does draft maps. We have a 90-day period to review those maps. At that time, we do public meetings. Final comments will be given to FEMA. Hopefully, they'll adopt those comments, and then within six months after that, the final maps would be issued. So I guess I'd ask any, any questions at this point?
Mayor Kirkendall, may I check to make sure Mr. Arnold's on the phone? Councilman Arnold, can you hear us?
I'm here.
Okay.
Any questions, Charlie?
No questions, thank you.
No, I don't have any questions. I'm just sitting here waiting to see, you know, need to hear from the public if they have any questions. We're talking about the floodplain.
Jane?
No questions.
Any comments from the public?
Mayor, I move to approve amendment number 2.
We've got one coming down.
Excuse me for taking so long to get up here. I'm the president of the HOA at the Gardens at Willow Creek. I guess one of my questions was, and as Steve kind of referred to it, if this was approved by FEMA, and I assumed by the city council at that time, to keep us out of the floodplain, what do we have now to come to us to help keep us out of the floodplain? What are our possibilities? What do we have available to us through the city? Maybe dig the ditch deeper or quicker, so, or build the levy higher? Is this any possibilities available? I mean, I, this is new to me. I don't know what all this is supposed to take place. And I was wondering, excuse me, wondering if there's some comment from the councilmembers on what could be possible to do?
Let's get it from the engineering side first, Jim.
We did look at preliminary costs associated with rebuilding the levy to meet FEMA requirements, which was, you know, a million to $2 million. The cheapest alternative was to grade out the creek. We, we don't own the creek, but we'd have to work with the property owners to get some sort of easement down there. There, it's very well vegetated down there, so by removing a lot of the vegetation, there's a little bit of grading we could do. That would be the preferred option to get rid of the whole levy scenario. However, if we did that option, we'd still have to maintain the creek and, you know, trim vegetation. Yeah.
John, my question, this is private property. All the things we're doing, is there liability?
Well, I, I think that, I guess it depends on what we do. I mean, in other words, the, the, if I understand correctly, the, the proposed approach, the idea is to... Can you go back one slide?
Yeah.
So would, would this is the, is this the current?
This, this is, well, the current's actually the FEMA map where it's 500-year floodplain. This is the current flood hazard. If, if we were just to tell FEMA to, we don't, you guys do what you're going to do, that would be...
In other words, this, this current scenario requires all of those pink-colored structures to have flood insurance. And this is the current, if I understand it, this is the current scenario or current situation?
That's correct.
So if, if the next slide is a proposed improvement...
The next slide is a refinement of the technical basis for identifying the floodplain. Isn't that correct?
We would do a more detailed hydraulic analysis, and we think we can show some, some of those structures out.
The difference between the previous slide and this slide is a technical analysis, which is much more refined. And by, and by refining that technical analysis with actual elevations and so forth, they expect that approximately 50, I guess, 50 or so structures may be removed from the floodplain. If you're in the floodplain and you have a mortgage, your lender is going to tell you you have to have flood insurance.
Isn't that, isn't that a positive?
Well, it's positive in, in that there would be 50 less, but it still leaves 90 or, or, you know, 90 or 100 properties that didn't have to buy, presumably didn't have to buy flood insurance before, but will now if they have, you know, if there's still a mortgage on the property.
I, I guess I just don't, I just don't understand how the federal government can jerk around with people's properties and their lives by forcing the city and the county to do the things they did to that armor bank twice to keep them out of the 100-year floodplain, and then come back and tell them that they're now in the 100-year floodplain and require them to have insurance. This is crazy. Just stupidity at its highest.
And we're not the only place that are doing it.
Well, I don't, as a private property owner, what do you do about it other than just be forced to go get insurance? I guess there's nothing we can do, right? Okay, thank you.
Any comments from the public? Maybe I went there. Anybody else?
Mayor, I, I think with, with you saying what you did is, if this is private property and we make improvements on it, if it floods and there is damage, are we now liable for the damage that happened from the flood?
Well, the, the city is not making improvements. The city is proposing to be a partner in the refined technical analysis of what the flood pattern would be in the event of 100-year flood.
And that's what we're spending our money on right here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It is not to participate in the construction or reconstruction of physical improvements.
These, these goalposts have moved several times.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at, yeah.
Did I ask a question again? You guys are talking about private-owned property. Yeah, I agree with the levies being private. Since when does a creek become private property? From my understanding, that is not a private property residue. And if it belongs to the city or the county, which I do not know which it belongs to, don't they have an obligation to keep the creek bed free of debris and let the water flow through versus letting all the trees grow up, all the dirt that washes in from higher up and everything like that? Isn't there a liability there to either the city or the county, whoever owns the creek bed?
Who owns the creek bed?
Privately owned. The water is not, but the creek is.
These watercourses are not publicly owned. They are subject to, to public laws and regulations as far as what you can do or not do in them to a certain extent. They fall under the jurisdiction. For example, it would not surprise me if this was classified as one of those waters of the United States that are regulated by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers so that if any party wanted to go in there and excavate the creek bottom or do things which modify that channel, you would have to get a Section 404 permit from the federal government.
Sir, if I, if I could clarify a little bit, I work at Prescott College, and a number of years ago, we had to do some improvements around that area. We have a creek that goes right through our, our, the college. Most of it belongs, the, the land in which the creek goes over, the college owns. We don't control the water flow. Anything that we wanted to do along there, we had to go through... Anything that we wanted to do along there, we had to go through the Army Corps and FEMA and a number of engineering companies to get permission to do alterations. But the land is ours, but the water and everything, you just can't do, even though it's ours, we can't do what we want to.
Okay, thank you.
Don't we have sewer lines in that creek bed as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have water lines.
So excavating that creek to a level that would be improvement for the flood stage would probably be impossible based on having pipes in that creek?
Or we'd have to move the utilities, Alan.
Okay, thank you.
Then I've come up, why don't you redo the sewer line there and excavate it lower?
Well, if we were the federal government and printed money, we probably could do that.
Well, I'm just asking, you say, you know, because we can't excavate it lower because of the sewer line there, which now belongs to the city, which I'm assuming now you have an easement to go through there. Now, do you not have more responsibility other than just have an easement and run the sewer lines through there?
No. I guess what it becomes is it becomes a responsibility of the property owner to, nah, at this point, because of the FEMA change, to have flood insurance, period. And I don't think the city can do anything about that other than take some out and leave some in. I don't know what else we do. We didn't create this problem. The city of Prescott didn't create this.
I know, and neither did the homeowners in the community. But is it, FEMA has authority over this? Does anybody have more knowledge about FEMA than I do?
They do have it.
They do have. Okay, thank you.
And, public and mayor and council, if I could comment, part of this process, this partnership process, is to present the type of information that you have received today, hopefully translated so it's understandable to, you know, homeowners, property owners, and so forth, because we certainly understand that you don't live in this regulatory world. But that is part of this process of analysis and consultation.
Chris, there's a ditch out behind Walmart at the wall that FEMA considers a navaquical stream.
Yeah, that's hilarious.
But you can't get a boat into it. Do we have a motion?
I'll try it again. Mayor, I move to approve Amendment Number Two to City Contract Number 201306182.
Second. Motion made in second. Any vote, please?
Councilman Arnold?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, let's go to Adam. Aye?
Item Two, aye. Illegal Drug Enforcement, Substance Abuse Treatment Centers, Community Residences, Land Uses and Related Codes Phase Two Action Plan.
Okay. Mayor and council, I'll go through this presentation. Copies of this presentation will be available in the city council office tomorrow. We will also endeavor to get it up on the city website so the public can view it at their leisure. This is quite a title. Illegal Drug Enforcement, Substance Abuse Treatment Centers and Community Residences Phase Two Action Plan. I will describe what Phase One is, and on the next slide, I'll kind of link these together. These topics all relate to community and what we, the city of Prescott, value. First bullet, as a city and community, we value the quality of life afforded to our residents and visitors. So that is the thread. Illegal Drug Enforcement, Substance Abuse Treatment Centers and Community Residences in some way, shape, or form, which we'll get into in a little bit more detail, do bear on our quality of life. There's a recitation from the general plan which reinforces this. The bottom bullet point, illegal drugs, a disproportionate number of substance abuse treatment centers, by some estimates that we've read recently in the media, 1 in 40 persons in our city of 40,000 may now be in these programs. That's a staggering statistic. These programs have constant turnover, varying successes of treatment, and many lack exit strategies. That is, if the treatment is not successful, what happens to those who are in that treatment? There has been discussion of clustering of centers and how that is not a good thing. We have also had the proliferation of community residences, regardless of who's living in these residences, where they come from, what they're doing. There is a definition of community residences, which is about number of occupants and so forth. But these community residences are arguably proliferating within single-family zoning districts, and in the view of some, the foregoing or aforementioned items and factors are influences which, in aggregate, can be adverse to the balance envisioned by the general plan. The only thing I want to mention on this particular slide, and there's a lot of small print on some of these slides, I'm not going to go through all of that small print, but the intent here is and was to make a freestanding presentation. That is, if you wanted to know something about these topics, how many documents do you have to try to research and go through? So that's why we put some of this background and repeated some of this background, so it could be more easily accessed by someone who doesn't have the time to do the research. Specifically, third bullet point, to address issues related to community residences, regardless of who's living in these residences, notably the proliferation of them in single-family residential neighborhoods that I mentioned. In September 2013, the city council adopted Ordinance Number 48661404. This ordinance amended the city of Prescott's Land Development Code, which was, and the ordinance was carefully crafted to avoid Federal Fair Housing Act challenges of being discriminatory toward disabled persons. This is a key point. The ordinance, first bullet point, also, as a matter of background, introduced a dispersion or dispersal requirement of 1,200 feet between non-housekeeping residences in residential zones, and afforded the opportunity for voluntary registration of community residences, both as a means to document legal or non-conforming status and to assist the city in evaluating new applications. While this was going on, it followed the adoption of new rules for drug and alcohol rehabilitation operations by Arizona Department of Health Services, or ADHS. Those new rules were adopted in spring 2013 for implementation beginning on October 1st, 2013, or a year ago. ADHS licenses are required for facilities providing supervision, protective, preventive, or personal care services, including controlling client medications. There is, I think, from those of us who are involved in dealing with community residences on a day-by-day basis, day-by-day basis, there is, I think, consensus that there is lack of clarity with respect to that agency, their roles, their rules, the interpretation of those rules, and certainly the enforcement. So following the September 2013 ordinance adoption, a 60-day checkpoint was presented to city council in November of 2013, summarizing the progress of what we term Phase One Action. Phase One Action was essentially the passing of the ordinance and then some organizational changes. The checkpoint in November of 2013 included these items, which I'm not going to go through because they are touched upon in subsequent slides. But there was a list of, going forward, a summary of additional actions that were recommended to be looked at and evaluated. Our experience since November 2013, I think, is summed up by saying, we now know a lot more about the local scale of community residences, whereas it was estimated that there were 102, 110, that number has now grown to over 150. We all know that on December 23rd of this year, 2014, a complaint was received by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, objecting to the ordinance alleging that it discriminates against group homes for the disabled, quote-unquote. And many people, I think, were surprised to learn, after this particular complaint was received, that the federal government has extended the definition of disabled to include persons who suffer from substance abuse. So it's not only physically disabled, it is an expanded definition. The city's response to that complaint was sent to HUD January 15th, just, what, 12 days ago. I would point out that during all of this time, there have been discussions between the industry or rehabilitation industry groups, a couple of them are listed there. We have also corresponded with ADHS. There was a lack, there's a lack of clarity with respect to how they approach rehabilitation treatment centers, which are subject to licensure. Certainly, the response we got back was just general information, saying, if you need information, look at our, you know, look at the law, look at our website, or talk to somebody. I would mention that now, in addition, you know, this is where the illegal drugs part of the presentation or the topic or subject of this presentation goes today. Against the backdrop of unprecedented concentration of substance abuse rehabilitation facilities in Prescott, on January 13, many of us saw an investigative report, the title of which was hooked, "Tracking Heroin's Hold on Arizona." The implications of that problem for Prescott, given the high number of rehabilitation failures, I don't think can be overstated by a reasonable person. We're seeing a substantial increase in narcotic cases and trafficking. In the words of Police Chief Gerald Monahan, our police chief, "We see those who wash out of the programs on the street." And unfortunately, those failures comprise a ready, concentrated, and highly lucrative market for illegal drugs in Prescott. Given that market, increased crime to supply and maintain drug habits is inevitable. So this is what we're facing as we sit here today. The council is interested, and the public's highly interested, in, okay, what do we do? Do we just sit and watch this happen and worsen and deepen as time goes on? What can we do? I think that certainly we can categorize and define a Phase Two consisting of action on three fronts. To counter and prevail over the current challenges associated with illegal drugs, our inordinate number of treatment centers, and community residences, regardless of who's living in them, proliferating within and threatening, frankly, to overrun single-family zoned areas. These three fronts, in our thinking, are, number one, new state legislation and collaboration statewide with other communities; number two, consideration of new city ordinances and code amendments, which typically pertain to land use; and number three, increased enforcement, both civil and criminal. Revisions have been proposed to Title 36 Arizona Revised Statutes. The legislative intent of this initiative on the city of Prescott is to expand state licensure of substance abuse treatment facilities and recovery counseling and support to, quote, "include any residential property owned, operated, or affiliated with a health care institution, even if services are not offered at those locations." The outcome desired is to improve the standard of care offered by these facilities, enhancing the success of their client rehabilitation programs. If city is a center for substance abuse recovery, it stands to reason that we would want to see everything done which would improve the standard of care and hence the success of those client rehabilitation programs to avoid secondary or associated situations and effects on our community on this whole area of rehabilitation and success or non-success. So a bill draft has been prepared by Arizona, the legislature, for Representative Noel Campbell. It may be introduced this week for hearing by the House Health Committee. If a bill is successful, we would look in as a partnership with the Arizona Department of Health Services for us to do their part and for us to do our part and them to do their part, being held accountable for successful implementation, including compliance. You know, there has to be enforcement. We've also contacted and reached out to the League of Arizona Cities to elevate the issue statewide. A number of cities have expressed interest. We're aware that NARA, one of the industry groups, has indicated that they will also seek legislation to expand licensure. Their approach, as we understand it, may be different than the city of Prescott's. There, as we understand it, is a tiered system with licensure, but different requirements for facilities not specifically providing medical services. With that background, the city attorney has some comments on the next two or three slides about new city ordinances or revisions to city ordinances that might be entertained by the city council.
Mayor and council, if you recall back in September 2013 and the discussions leading up to that, when we were talking about an ordinance amendment, which turned out to be Ordinance 48661404, we told you, and I think you agreed, and in fact, a number of you stated this, that this was sort of a first step in trying to refine the land development code to deal with some of the issues that community residences or group homes have brought to single-family residential. And again, so as a first step, Craig went through some of the history. We reduced the number of community residence population from eight to six and adopted a buffer zone in order to help disperse group homes so that we could prevent clustering and sort of deinstitutionalize the areas. And that is really, the benefit to that is both to the neighborhood as well as to the folks living in group homes, from a therapeutic standpoint, they're more incorporated and integrated into the community rather than being sort of segregated in certain pockets, in certain cluster pockets. So in the meantime, we've been working with a consultant on this issue, and have come up with some additional refinements to, proposed refinements to the current land development code as it's been amended by the ordinance in September of 2013. And these things, as we know, that the law in a lot of areas is sort of fluid and constantly changing, and in this particular area, it's constantly changing. In other words, there's constantly challenges by HUD to various cities and towns across the country, dealing mostly with group home-type restrictions or group home-type regulations. And it appears from some of the information we've received that HUD seems to be targeting cities and towns that have a higher or disproportionate number of group homes that then react to that higher or disproportionate number by adopting regulations. And HUD appears to be going after those communities, communities like Prescott, and targeting communities like Prescott who adopt, attempt to adopt balanced regulations. When cities around, cities or towns around the areas of those with an unbalanced or disproportionate number don't seem to have the problem because they already have ordinances in place or old ordinances, so they even have more restrictive zoning. And a recent example we received was at Skokie, Illinois, which I don't know off the top of my head how large that city or town is, has about 60 group homes and adopted recently a, some regulations similar to Prescott's, and HUD's gone after Skokie. As I discussed before, I think with you, HUD, at the same time, we got our notice of an investigation, Chandler, Arizona got a notice. But the problem with that process is HUD looks at cities or towns that have a disproportionate number of group homes who adopt ordinances or regulations... number of group homes, who adopt ordinances or regulations, attempt to deal with it. The cities or towns that surround these cities or towns with disproportionate numbers have low numbers, because they already have restrictive zoning in place. So HUD seems to look at the, react to, yes, react to the cities or towns that are attempting to deal with it, when the other towns and cities in the nearby area don't have the problem. So there isn't any concept on HUD's part, I think, to sort of share the, or for other cities and towns to sort of take on some of these group homes. So when a city the size of Skokie has 60, and cities and towns around Skokie have, I think the comment was, you could count on one hand the number of group homes, and the other cities and towns surrounding them, Skokie reacts to that like Prescott did, and Skokie gets, you know, investigated by HUD. So it seems to be apparently a pattern, under the current HUD administration, to do that. So, given that, and given that, you know, we've responded to HUD with our position, and provided with a number of documents, and HUD has then responded back by requesting a significant number of additional documents, and has probably begun to visit Prescott at some point in the future and interview various people. One of the things we're proposing to talk to the council about is a further refinement of the ordinance, and it would do these things. It would, the proposed ordinance, and these are things that, according to our consultant, would help us in our fight, or in our discussions with HUD, to be, in HUD's view, more compliant with the Fair Housing Act. And so what we're proposing, and again, these are concepts and not specific language, is that the number of unrelated persons in any single-family residence, in other words, right now, we allow the number of unrelated persons in a single-family zone to be six. We also allow that number for small community residents to be six. Well, the proposal would say, whether you're related, a group of related persons in a single-family home, it doesn't matter if it's a group home, community residence, or just for college students, we would reduce that number to four. So you could have any number of unrelated, any number of related persons living in a single-family residence, but no more than four unrelated persons would be allowed to live in a single-family residence. That means, again, four college students, four folks in a group home, or four other persons, whatever their living arrangements, would be allowed as a matter of right in a single-family residential zone. Beyond that, any group of unrelated persons, and this would be primarily, you know, group homes, would be allowed in a single-family residential, between, you know, up to 12 persons. A permit would be required in order to establish a five-to-12-person group home in a single-family residential zone. The number, the five-to-12, though, isn't a 12-person allowance. It is an allowance based on the building code. And the building code will tell you, for instance, that you can have one person in a bedroom for the first 70 square feet of that bedroom, and every additional person in that bedroom, you'd have to have, say, an additional 50 feet, or something to that effect. And that's an across-the-board building code or health-safety requirement. So a bedroom that would have, say, 100 square feet, a 10-by-10 bedroom, would be allowed one person. If it had 120 feet, you'd have two people, 70 plus 50. So in order to establish a group home of between five and 12 persons in a single-family residential zone, an operator would have to come in, obtain a permit, and have some sort of floor plan that would show some basic measurements of the residents. It would allow the city to then go to that group home, confirm measurements, basically taking a tape measure, and confirming the measurements of the bedroom, and then issuing a permit for the allowable number of unrelated persons in a group home to live in that particular group home. So for instance, if you had a three-bedroom home, and each of the three, each of the bedrooms had 120 square feet, the permit would allow two plus two plus two, or six persons, to live in that single-family residential zone. The permit would also allow for inspections or other checks by the city staff, on notice, obviously, to make sure that, once the permit's issued, there isn't an attempt to then slip in additional beds into those bedrooms in violation of the building code. And again, the building code requirement is a health-safety requirement, it's not a zoning code requirement. The recommendation now is to, that dispersal, this concept of dispersal or buffer zone is an acceptable concept, I think, in Prescott's case especially, given all the clustering we've had. But the recommendation is to reduce it slightly, from 1,200, the current 1,200 to 800 feet. That concept is basically based on about a block and a half, a block and a half distance in the city. 1,200 feet is about two blocks. Again, these are averages. So the permitted group home would have, again, a number of persons allowed, based on the actual square footage of bedrooms. Each of those permitted group homes would then be, we would be allowed to set a buffer or dispersal zone of 800 feet between the two. Most interesting thing that we've learned, and this is a fairly recent concept, and it really is a function of the increase, not just in Prescott and in other cities, but pretty much nationwide, there's a, this phenomenon of sober-living or recovery-type homes is a relatively new phenomenon. It's growing very fast. You can infer what you will from that. Is it a highly profitable industry? But for some reason, it's growing, and it's growing fast, and it's growing all over the country. And what a number of cities in the east have done, and it appears to pass muster with HUD, is to also then make a distinction of group homes based on the length of time the resident is allowed to live there. In other words, if you treat a group home like a traditional family, a traditional family in a single-family residential neighborhood, there's really, the intent is a sort of longer-term and indefinite time period where that single family would reside in that single-family residential zone. You compare that, for instance, to multifamily-type zoning, there is a less-permanent-type nature to that type of residency. It's not transient by any stretch of the imagination, but it is a less-permanent-type living arrangement in multifamily, again, generally speaking. What that means is that cities have tried this, and again, this has been, now, so far, it's been accepted, is that these permitted buffered, single-family residential group homes, if there is no restriction or limitation on the length of time that a resident is allowed to live there, and if you think of that in terms of sort of your traditional concept of a group home, for the developmentally-disabled, for senior citizens, for other persons with other types of disabilities other than substance abuse, those tend to be long-term or indefinite, whereas your sober-living facilities tend to be shorter-term. And in fact, most have a six-to-nine-to-maybe-year limit, at which point you sort of graduate from the program and move on. Those types of homes are being actually not permitted in single-family residential zones, because they don't look and act like a traditional, single-family residential use. They're less permanent, again, not transient, but less permanent. Those types of homes, under this proposed ordinance revision, would be allowed in multifamily residential, and not single-family. So what you're doing is, is you're saying what looks and acts more like a single-family-type residence, if it's more than, if it's five or more unrelated persons, that's allowed in a single-family residential use, it's permitted, it's a staff-level permit, and that permit allows for a certain number of people, but we're allowed to create a dispersal or buffer zone. If it's a more, if it's a less-permanent living arrangement, like, for the most part, most of the sober-living-type facilities, those are going to be allowed in multifamily residential. And remember, Prescott's zoning is inclusive, so commercial zoning allows for residential use, you know, and all of that. So if you can, you know, it'd also be allowed in commercial and other uses, like, you know, like all of our other uses. So those are some of the proposed changes. Again, these are in concept and not specific language, to the land development code that we will probably be bringing forward if we get direction today. And obviously, this is a public meeting, so we're going to also, assuming we get direction today, to proceed forward, is to inform HUD that these are concepts that we are contemplating and considering in amending the land development code, and to get some of their, I guess, feedback, if you will, as we go forward. But as far as we understand from our consultant, these, those concepts are, have been accepted, or generally acceptable to HUD. At this point, I can go into the other ordinances, if you'd like, or I can answer questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
Would the proposal, proposed amendments affect existing group homes?
Not likely. And the reason is, is that Arizona has a very strong legal non-conforming use, or vested rights law that allows for uses that are established. So, just like the ordinance we adopted in 2013 didn't affect, you know, legally, legally conforming at the time uses, this, any new changes in the zoning code wouldn't affect legally-established uses at the time that zoning code would go into effect. Timing-wise, again, if we get direction from council today, I think we can bring this forward and implement this within the next, say, 30 to 60 days, or less.
John, and Councilwoman, if I may add to that, of course, John's been describing amendments pertaining to land development code. You know, if there are, if there are state legislation which pertains to licensing, that's very different.
That's right.
Then, on the effective date of that state legislation, if it expands the umbrella of licensure, then more facilities would be subject to those requirements.
That's correct. Moving forward into some other, what we've, just other city ordinances, now, these are, the council has had some copies, some draft ordinances provided to it over the last few months, that deal with some of these issues. These would be ordinances, just to make it clear, these would be ordinances as sort of general application, they would affect everybody. They would be, apply across the board. The first one that we recommend strongly is, currently, our city code doesn't give the code enforcement officers any authority to cite into civil court. It either requires prosecutor's office to do it, or go through the police department. It's a very sort of inefficient, cumbersome way of citing. In fact, frankly, most cities allow for code enforcement to cite into the city court. So in other words, if code enforcement can't get compliance with code issues by a property owner, and that's obviously the first goal of code enforcement, the code enforcement officer can then cite essentially a civil ticket into the city court, and it's adjudicated that way, allowing for, if compliance isn't obtained through the process, allowing for fines of the property owner for failure to comply.
John, could you describe the current process?
Like I said, the current process is a little cumbersome. It either requires that the city prosecutor's office file what's called a long-form complaint, it's almost like a little mini civil suit, into the city court, or a police officer can cite. But again, you're diverting then your law enforcement resources to code enforcement citations, and then the officer would have to go in, and obviously, it's not just writing the citation, it's testifying, it's being interviewed, it's all those things, that you're sort of diverting law enforcement resources into code enforcement. So this would allow the code enforcement officer to issue the citation and act as the witness to, what did you see, and what, you know, and what did I see, and all those kinds of things. So it's a better use, I think, of limited resources we have. Business licenses is another option. Again, these are, for the most part, we don't, we aren't advocating one way or the other, but this is, business licenses is one way of tracking all businesses in the city. For the most part, group homes, whether they're nonprofit, all businesses, whether they're nonprofit, under this proposed ordinance draft, would have to obtain a business license. Currently, the licensing requirement for the city is all businesses who pay a TPT or sales tax have to obtain a business license. As we know, in a year or so, when the state starts taking over collections, that TPT license goes away. So from a, not only from a tracking standpoint for business, but from a public safety standpoint, fire department, police department, pretty much, the city won't really know what businesses are exist, will be, what businesses come into existence in the city, which ones go, those kinds of things.
And as you mentioned, John, in addition to that, since the city is going to be handing over transaction privilege tax collection to the state, if we don't know who's here doing business, it's pretty likely that there's going to be a lot of tax which is not being paid.
Right. So, again, to reiterate, it's, because it's a license, and there's usually a nominal fee associated with it, it applies across the board to anybody who engages in regular commerce, and that includes nonprofit organizations. It's not a tax. As we know, most nonprofits are exempt from most taxes. It's a fee, it's usually nominal. And so all enterprises that engage in commerce in the city of Prescott would be, under this proposed ordinance, would have to obtain a business license and pay a small, either annual fee or semi-annual, or whatever the council chooses to do in terms of fee. And the fees are generally an attempt at cost recovery for the administration of it. And because, for the most part, most community residences, group homes, would have to obtain a business license as well, because we would consider that engaging in commerce, whether there's room rental charges or other types of things.
Excuse me, would that include professionals?
Yes.
Work out of their house?
It's a policy discussion, to what you include and what you don't include, but certainly you can include professionals. Now, again, it has to be sort of a regular engagement in commerce, so if you sell things on eBay, or every once in a while on Craigslist, or you sell a car, you know, those kinds of things are activities that would trigger the requirement of a business license. But somebody who engages in regular commerce out of his or her home, generally, under most business license regulations or ordinances, is required to pay a business license. You know, and again, it's one of those things, not only for tracking purposes, you know, sales tax, but for public safety, so that public safety knows what new businesses are going to be, are establishing themselves in town, police and fire. So there are advantages to it, and obviously, there are down, there are other issues that people may not be happy with as far as business licenses. But again, the tax privilege license is pretty much going away in the very near future. Another option, and this sort of ties into what Councilmember Wilcox mentioned, is the non-conforming use abandonment ordinance. Currently, the city has a presumptive term of one year. In other words, if there is a legal non-conforming use that's created by a change in an ordinance, it takes a year of non-use for that use to be then considered abandoned, or at least there's a presumption that it's abandoned. A number of cities in Arizona have gone to six months. The courts have upheld six months as a reasonable time that allows for a city to deem a use as a, a legal non-conforming use as abandoned, or at least the presumption that it's been abandoned. So that's an option, again, where if a commercial-type use, or a group home-type use ceases to operate in a single-family residential zone, and ceases to operate for six months or more under this kind of change, then any attempt to reuse that property would then have to comply with whatever the new ordinance requirements would be. There's a couple of other--
Sorry, John, but on that one, it would affect everybody.
It affects everybody. All, yeah, all of these we're talking about, these six, all of these affect everybody. It is, like I said, it's a general application, so it does affect, and that's part of the policy consideration, is all of these six ordinances have a broader impact than simply the issues we're talking about.
And that's staying in compliance with the law.
It is.
And the confines that we have to follow.
Well, right, we, yeah, in other words, we have some options when it comes to trying to get rid of legal non-conforming uses, and one of them's called amortization. And what that means is, we buy them out. We, you know, and that's a viable alternative, but again, it's a, can be, has the potential to be extremely costly. But there are very few ways of getting rid of legal non-conforming uses, other than abandonment or amortization. The other ones, I'll sort of just touch on briefly, there are some ordinances we've seen in other communities across the country that deal with nuisance residential properties. And these are properties that have continued to be problems for the neighbors. In other words, the police are called on a regular basis, code enforcement's called on a regular basis, or maybe even, you know, in other words, they're ongoing, regular problems in a neighborhood that disrupt the sort of peace and quiet of a single-family neighborhood, and they can be deemed to be a nuisance, and it's a court process, and basically what you do by way of this type of ordinance is go into court and get an injunction and issue some fines, and it's sort of a court process to attempt to get compliance from property owners or tenants who simply aren't sort of-- or tenants who simply aren't sort of abiding by the rules of the community. They're disruptive, they're loud, there's illegal drug use or other illegal activities going on that are certainly inconsistent with the nature of a single-family neighborhood. Neighborhood preservation, maintenance code proposal is something that, you know, Prescott has a fairly lax, I guess, code when it comes to requiring, you know, people to maintain their properties up to a certain standard. Some cities go as far as, if you have a rusty air conditioner, we can make you paint it or change it out. These, again, they can be as strict or as loose as you want, and that's why it's called neighborhood preservation. When cities start seeing some, you know, lack of preservation in neighborhoods, it starts seeing some decay, there's potential for, you know, for blight to occur. So it's, it's, again, it's a, it'd be an ordinance of general application, would apply to everyone, and certainly is a major policy question for the council to, to address. But it does address neighborhood, physical conditions in the neighborhood, tall weeds, trash, cars parked in, you know, on blocks, peeling paint, you know, pieces, you know, gates and doors that aren't, that are falling off, those kinds of things.
Does a code enforcement officer then, if that were to change, be given the enforcement opportunity to write tickets on those kind of things as well?
Yes. The neighborhood preservation, a neighborhood preservation code would, would be primarily enforced by the code enforcement folks. And again, the, the primary function of code enforcement is compliance. It's not to go out and cite people. It's, it's, it's as if, you know, you had a, the opposite, I hate to, I'm not trying to throw the police department over the bus, but if you had police officers out there just trying to slow traffic down and not issue tickets, that's what code enforcement's function is really, is to get compliance with the code that's in place at the time. It's not to, it's not to, the only time you really want to go to court on a code enforcement case is when you have somebody who just doesn't, who just absolutely refuses to comply. It's sort of a last resort. That's the general nature of code enforcement citations into the, into the court. And last but not least, there is, there is a statute in Arizona that allows for a residential rental inspection program. It's a fairly complicated and sort of administrative-intensive process, but that it would allow for the city to have a residential rental inspection person or people to go in and, upon request of a tenant or a landlord, go in and, or by warrant, go in and inspect a property, a rental property, to make sure it's in compliance with, with existing codes and those types of things. Again, I think the only city in the state that actually has that type of program is Yuma. And I, the draft ordinance we provided really sort of mirrors that one, it's been tweaked a little. Not a lot of cities do it, obviously, and the problem with the statute, quite honestly, is that it doesn't allow for the city to charge fees to do the programs. In other words, there's no cost recovery in that type of program. So again, a huge sort of policy decision, if you want to have this type of rental inspection program, it's going to have to come out of a budget that, that doesn't allow for much cost recovery. The program itself doesn't allow for much cost recovery. But again, it's an option to, it sort of deals with the, if the neighborhood preservation ordinance deals with the outside of property, the residential rental inspection program deals more with the inside of the property. So it's sort of two sides of the same point. And those are some ordinances we provided, you know, drafts to you for your review. If certainly, we, we can go into more detail or provide more copies to you if, if you'd like. But other, other than that, I, I'm happy to answer any questions or just shut up and sit back.
Mr. Happy.
Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have, some of these are great ideas, John and Craig, and some are, are not so good. I guess what we, and I, I got to go back to, I think our last meeting, we had this, and Councilman Lamerson brought it up. And I know that this is, this is the reason we're, we're doing all this, is because of sober living. Okay? This has nothing to do with somebody's rusted HVAC unit or a car on blocks. And we just need to tread very carefully about what we're about ready to go down this road. And I'm not, we, we need to address the problem. And in doing that, obviously, we get a letter from HUD. Good intentions pave the road to you-know-where. And we could be, a year from now, and we haven't solved the problem, but we now have a code enforcer going around, not saying this is going to happen, we got a whole nother layer of bureaucracy and system that are just so intrusive on the general public, and we have to address the problem. So alls I'm saying is we need, as we go down to each one of these ordinances, we got to see the cause and effect of each one of these.
And explicitly, council member, you know, on slide 11, not all of the ordinances are necessarily being recommended, as you know. And as you've said, when you apply them, like we would have to apply them uniformly, that can include issues, locations, uses, that are not creating issues at the present. And, you know, so there's that balance that we talked about from the beginning, that community is about balance, and that's all we're looking for, is balance.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, Mr. Attorney. Residential inspection, you commented that. Our code enforcement officers are actually law enforcement officers too, simply by enforcement of the code. And you brought up traffic violations and everything else. And if we were to harm our code enforcement officers with the newest piece of equipment, new dog named Fido, who happened to go through the, the drug thing, and the dog's equipped to alert, trained to alert, whatever the tune would be, is that probable cause then, at that point, for the police to do a search for illegal drugs?
Well, it's, it's a really complicated Fourth Amendment question. I mean, and I'm not trying to avoid it, but it's extremely complicated in terms of what, you know, what is considered plain view or open fields? Can you fly a drone over someone's backyard and look in there to see if they're doing something illegal, and does that give you probable cause? And what are the, you know, what are the, what's the property owner's, you know, reasonable expectation of privacy? Those are the kinds of issues that, that are raised by your question. I don't, and I will tell you, I don't know the, the answer off the top of my head. I can't tell you black and white, yes or no, that it, that it's constitutionally permissible to do that. Does it, can a, can a drug dog give probable cause on a traffic stop? Certainly.
What's the difference on a traffic stop?
Because the courts have said that traffic, traffic stops, there are exigent circumstances, the car can move, you don't necessarily need a warrant, and people have a lesser expectation of privacy when they're driving in a vehicle on a highway and they get pulled over and the, and an officer brings a drug-sniffing dog and circles it around the car, and the dog sits and signals that there's a drug in the car, then he can, then he can do a search of the car without a warrant because he has probable cause and reliance on the dog. And the reason he can do it without a warrant is because of the exigent circumstance, the car could drive away if he has to go get a warrant. When it comes to a house, the, the courts are very, have given, very much give a lot of deference to someone in their own home. And your, your expectation of privacy in your own home is probably the greatest it's at any place in, in the country. In other words, if you're in a motel room, it's a little less. If you're in a car, it's a little less. If you're out in public, it's a lot less. If you're in a dormitory, it's different. But if you're in a, in your single-family home or your apartment, it's pretty high expectation of privacy.
Well, you're here again, you're talking about a rental unit. You're not talking about somebody's personal home. You're talking about a business. All right? That's number one. And then number two, if I'm not mistaken, some time ago when we got into these conversations, oh, it seems like a lifetime, I was informed that using illegal drugs is not a, oh, what is it called? Disability.
You're, you're not protected by the Fair Housing Act as if you're, if you're currently using, as a general rule, you're currently, you're not, if you're currently using illegal, you're illegally using a controlled substance or illegally using, illegally using controlled substance. There's a different, it's a different analysis. The, the, you know, the question is similar to, if a police officer's walking by a single-family home and he smells marijuana smoke, based on his or her training and experience, is that enough to give probable cause to that officer to go get a warrant to search that house? Maybe. But again, it's a very, it's, I don't want to give you, I can't give you a black and white answer, it's a very complicated area of law. And whether that, that drug sniff, you know, whether that drug-sniffing dog is reliable enough, there's, in fact, I seem to recall, there is some recent case law on that topic. I forget the outcome of the case, quite honestly. I mean, but it's constantly, it's a, it's a changing issue.
Well, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, no.
But I would like you to get some research, so we understand where we can tread with respect to what my colleague down here at the other end was saying. You know, there's some issues here that I'm fairly concerned with. I don't like the idea because somebody decided to open up a rehabilitation home right here. Now, somebody that wants to deal with Alzheimer's has got to move down the block, can't move next door because it's got to have a separation because we all lump them together. So I'm just telling you, I've got some issues with this whole thing, okay? So I would like to know where some of the real tools that we can use to try and help clean this up.
Steve.
I got a little bit of a different question. I guess I wouldn't have the question if I knew the answer, so bear with me. HUD has determined that alcohol and drugs, and even in some cases, obesity, is a disease and considers it a problem. Does Social Security Administration look at those things as a disability as well?
You know, I--
And if they don't, why are we even paying attention to it?
Well, what we're, what we often see is what, what the Social Security Administration sees as a disability for purposes of SSI versus what the VA sees as a disability versus what's considered a disability under Fair Housing Act, or for that matter, the ADA, are oftentimes different. In other words, they're dealing with different sets of laws, different sets of regulations. What we do know, and we can say for certain, is that persons who are, you know, recovering from or suffering from alcoholism or, or, or drug addiction, and if it's an illegal or controlled substance drug addiction, if they're no longer using that controlled substance illegally and are in an attempt to recover, are considered disabled and are protected by the Fair Housing Act. I mean, I think that's, that's, I, I don't know about the rest of the sort of question or answer, but I, but I think the focus needs to be on what the Fair Housing Act requires us to do. And it requires us to treat persons who are suffering from addiction of alcohol or other substances, as long as they're not using those controlled substances illegally, to be treated as disabled.
I get, I get that, but, but my point, overarching point has been all day long, and you just mentioned several different organizations, that seemingly, somebody within those organizations are making up rules and regulations. Some group of people are making up those rules that aren't followed throughout the whole process of government at a federal level. And so we have to respond differently, and it's very difficult for us as a community to set standards which we want to follow. Where are our rules? Where are our rights to be able to say, these people now have been considered disabled with drug and alcohol houses? So where's our right to be able to equip our, our enforcement officer with drug dogs and go to these places that are, are making money, making, bank on trying to rehab these people? And if that dog can't go in there and find people that are on drugs when they're at a rehabilitation center, then what rights do we have to protect our community? That's just wrong. It's wrong to consider a class of people disabled, but they're not giving us the enforcement right. I, I just, I don't know how, why we just can't do it and challenge them to say it's wrong to go into a facility with our people, with a dog, and the dog alerts the people that have illegal drugs. Why can't we go in there and do that? Why can't we arrest them?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this bottom line here, for years, we've done nothing. Now we're doing something. For years, we let our neighborhoods get clustered with these places. Now we have to thin it out, and that's always a harder process. As a council, we ask staff for help and solutions. Here it is. Thank you very much for getting on this, you guys. I think we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah. And let's, oh, excuse me.
Mayor, thank you, and this will probably parlay right into the next slide in a minute here. I've talked a lot over the years, we all have, about this issue, and the Prescott I know has changed, the Prescott we all know has changed. And I can't say that it's changed for the better. We've seen some approaches, we've seen some recommendations, and inevitably, it's going to take the legislation, it's going to take amending our ordinance, it's going to take doing some of these other steps that are being discussed. And, you know, I appreciate the applause to Steve's comments, because on one side, I want to go as far out as we can to deal with the issue. But at the same time, how many millions of dollars are we going to put the city at risk for violating people's rights? How do we approach this in a way that makes sense and doesn't just throw money or throw something at it that has no impact? The minute we go and violate somebody's civil rights, we're going to get sued, we're going to end up having to go through litigation, everything we've done will be challenged, our police department will be put under scrutiny. Is that what we want to accomplish? It's not going to shut down the industry, it's not going to run them out. I don't want the police department or the fire department to be able to walk into my personal residence for no reason at all. So there's going to be a line that we, as a community, have to determine that makes sense. I want to find an avenue to enable our staff to enforce the laws that are on the books today and address the laws that need to be on the books. I think there's some steps we can do that are going to have an immediate impact, that are going to improve the quality of life. There's some in the industry who are saying, we want more regulation, we want to clean up this industry. How many industries out there say that? Not many. Not everybody in this industry wants to see these things happen. They've made that abundantly clear, but some do, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate our staff. I mean, I've, for one, have been extremely critical of our staff on the work that they've done to date. I believe that we're taking some of the appropriate steps, and I think we can do more. But I have to ask the question, at what point do we start doing things that turn us into a police state and a place I don't want to be? We can address these within the confines of the law, but at the same time, we're going to have to ask the community to give some as well, to be able to allow us to do these things. Because no matter what, we can't enforce it on one person, one house, one industry. We will end up getting our pantsuit off, and nothing will get better at all. So, I mean, that's--
Charlie, I guess my point is with your, your comment, I don't want anybody coming into my bedroom with a dog either, but that's my own private house. These folks are in business, and they're in business to help people. And if we are not allowed as a group to go in to the schools with a drug-sniffing dog to try to clean up this mess, then we have nothing as a council to offer.
And to your point, I don't disagree with you, but we're talking about a business that has all the protections of residential that we can't touch. These people are here voluntarily. They can't just waive their rights without consenting to it. There are so many legal problems with how we deal with this, and, you know, the HUD complaint is the precursor to something bigger happening. I'm not saying that we should be afraid to step forward and take a risk, but we have to realize the line that we are proposing at some point in time, whether or not that's reasonable. I want to see this industry cleaned up. I want to see Prescott cleaned up.
If I could, John, once you're charging somebody to, you're now, you're a business, right? You're a commercial viable business. Well-- Let me show you my line of thinking. Once I'm a business, and I'm, I'm taking money for, I'm a hotel, or I'm a ski resort or whatever it may be, Don comes in, he makes sure it's all safe. I mean, that's, that's the price I pay for being a commercial business. I'm under the fire department, I'm under ADA, I'm under all of these things. Once I start receiving money, in, I guess, where, where are we falling short on that?
Again, it's, it's, it's not black and white. I mean, think about it in this way, if an apartment owner rents rooms or rents apartments, those people who live in those apartments have, have all of the same rights and privileges to privacy and, and expectation of privacy that you do in your single-family home that you own. There's no difference. A hotel, a person in a hotel room has a certain level of expectation of privacy. You can't just go into a hotel room without any kind of warrant or probable cause or exigent circumstance because that person has a reasonable expectation of privacy. And so there, there, you know, these folks-- And so there, you know, these folks who live in these, in these group homes, that's their, that's their residence, at least for the time being, six, nine months a year. No different than the folks who, the Alzheimer's folks who live in a group home for Alzheimer's folks.
Yeah, but John, we just passed an ordinance that told the people in the Alzheimer's home, you can't live within X amount of feet, because somebody's got a rehabilitation home. I can see where there's an inherent problem with the way we're going down this road, because what you've done to accommodate a so-called group home is denied equal opportunity to the people that have Alzheimer's or whatever the case would be.
Because we aren't allowed to pick preferences when it comes to which disabilities we like and which disabilities we don't like. And I'm sorry if that doesn't make you happy, but that's the law. And, and, and let me just go back to this whole privacy issue, that I'm not telling you that, you know, you're, and I'll go to that example of, if a police officer has a trained, certified drug sniffing dog, and he's walking down the street, and that dog somehow signals to that police officer that there's drugs in that vicinity. I don't know, quite honestly, if that alone is going to get you a warrant from a judge to say, yeah, there's probable cause that it's that house, which may be 20 feet from the sidewalk, and is that dog then, you know, qualified to be able to sniff out a drug 20 feet away from the house? In other words, every one of these cases is going to be fact-specific. But certainly, if a dog sits there, if a trained, certified drug dog sits there and tries to tell you that there's, there's drugs in that vicinity, you better have, my view is, you better have, as a police officer, trying to get a warrant to get into that house, you better have some other evidence that you're, to convince that judge to issue that warrant to get into that house. Because if you go into that house, you know, without any other basis other than the dog signaled it, you violated that fourth, the Fourth Amendment rights of those folks, and anything that you find in there is going to be suppressed, and that, that doesn't even deal with any kind of civil suit that would come along. So, again, we have, we have these limitations, we have these restrictions, we're trying to be as assertive as possible with what we're, what we're doing, but we, but, you know, if you want to consider it that our hands are tied somewhat, well, I don't think that's an unfair description of the situation. Our hands are somewhat tied. Fair Housing Act, ADA, and other laws do tie our hands as to what we can do, as does the Fourth Amendment.
Chris and Charlie, let's kind of start wrapping this part down. We've still got some more.
Yeah, it's fine. You know, do we want to create these new ordinances? Do we want to bring up these gray area questions? No. But you know what? There's good and bad in this industry. We really need the bad to go. We got a person in our audience that has 15 group homes within two blocks of our house. You know, if they would have been following the golden rule and took care and cared for Prescott, we wouldn't even have to deal with any of this stuff. But they chose to take over neighborhoods and cluster, and now these people have to deal with. It's not like these people are getting reunited and blending with the community anymore. They are a community within the community, and that's the problem that we got to take care of. And the bad players, I think these are great steps. They need to go.
And Chris, I agree with everything you just said. I just want to make sure that everything we do is legal. And I'm sorry, I've got one question for the city manager. Of the 150, 160 registered facilities, what percentage of them are actually licensed under the current state law?
Do we know what that is? 25 to 30% estimated?
Number. 25 to 30 of them are licensed. Step one, legislation requiring licensing.
Yeah, and to, and to be specific, I mean, there may or may not be understanding of what we just said. Your question and the answer to that is, the question was, from a state licensing viewpoint, of those who are providing treatment, recovery treatment in this community, what percentage or number of those require licenses from the state? And it's, and it's like 15, 20%?
Yep.
Max.
Mayor, if they're looking for direction, I mean, I'd love to see all these flushed out and look at each one of them, all these proposed ordinances.
I think to kind of summarize it, we, our town has changed, and it's still changing.
The last several months, we've been hearing from the citizens of this community who live here for lots of different reasons, but probably the same reasons that we all live here, it's a great place to live. It's changing. We have been asking our management team to look at anything that was out there that might fit into the toolbox. We asked them to bring a toolbox today, and I think it's a big toolbox, the options that may, where I don't think it was ever the intent to go down this list and say, we're going to enact all these. But it gives us some options. And I really believe that the council and the community is ready to support the city with another revenue stream if we have to, because it's going to take money to provide some of the enforcement, whatever it takes. I think that we've got the help out there, so certainly, we're not going to break any laws. That's not the intent. And I don't see any dog sniffing around anybody's house unless there's a reason for the dog to be there. So, guys, thanks for, there's a lot of work put into this, and it gives us a starting point. So Craig, thank you, and John.
And Mayor, if I could just put up the final slide, and we've skipped over a couple, but I think this is the toolbox that you just described. What can we do immediately? There are four things that we can do immediately. How about next-level illegal drug enforcement? If we're going to, if we're going to create or provide new resources for illegal drug enforcement from the perspective that we're going to have to do a lot more in the city of Prescott, yes, in partnership with other authorities, but, you know, do whatever it takes in the city of Prescott in terms of illegal drug enforcement. Well, that will have a cost, and that's something that we can talk about, and we suspect we should talk about on February 12th, when we have our council budget priorities workshop. Business license, something to think about, the other ordinances, you know, you know, if there's interest in those, there's a venue in the Planning and Zoning Commission. So Mayor, there is the toolbox there. And any direction the council wants to give to us today, or any other time this is noticed for public discussion, or council and/or public discussion, we can certainly do that. But this is the toolbox.
Okay. Well, on behalf of the council and the public, it's obvious that we have concerned citizens here. We will continue to move forward. Somebody have something they need to-
Just, just real quick, Mayor, I just want to let the public know that we skipped two pages, increased enforcement, criminal and civil, or civil and criminal, and maybe we could hit on that at a later time.
There'll be a lot more conversation. Jane?
I just wanted to add that I, I'm in favor of all the four immediate steps that you listed, but I really need to understand what you mean by implementation of next-level illegal drug enforcement. I'm a little concerned about the description of a police state occurring in Prescott. So that needs to be in more detail presented.
And this is not the time to have that extended discussion, but next, next level is resources and how those resources are deployed. We have touched upon some of the potential concerns about probable cause, reasonable expectations of privacy and so forth. So those are topics for another day, and those are important topics, because that next level of illegal drug enforcement has to be very clear on what resources and what procedures are going to be deployed or not deployed.
And Mayor, you know, our police are aware of the problem. They know what we need to do and look forward to hearing from them. But as far as direction, Craig, I think the immediate four items, the sooner those are brought back to the council, the better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Adam J.
Legislative update. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I love being at the end of a long meeting, so I will keep it very brief. This is the 16th day of session. So far, 791 bills have been posted. I have tried to cull through all of those in between other things going on, and I will keep you updated more in the future. You're all aware that the executive's budget has been introduced, and there are a number of things that would impact revenue to cities and towns and counties. Part of the concern there is how that revenue would be impacted and some precedent that that could set. But because you are having a meeting this Friday with the legislative delegation for District One, which is our district, I just want to point out that there are three bills of concern that will be heard in committees tomorrow. One of those is House Bill 2212, which has to do with licensing and accountability and enforcement that is allowed for cities and towns, which is a timely topic, based on the last hour of conversation. That bill would require cities and towns to notify licensed applicants of their right to sue the city if statutory requirements are not precisely filed. And so that would expand the number of lawsuits for licensing that we've just discussed. So I would suggest that we would be opposed to that bill and its impact on local control, of which every city has different issues that it's trying to address based on its licensure requirements. Another bill is House Bill 2504, which has to do with alarm monitoring and the current requirement that certain agents of alarm companies are required to be fingerprinted because they have access to private residences. This would remove that requirement, and it's something that our police department has had concerns about every time that it has been introduced in the past, because obviously, we would prefer to limit the number of people with nefarious backgrounds from having access and licensed access to people's homes as part of their business. Again, I would suggest that we would be opposed to a bill like that, because we have had quite a lot of success with our alarm bill here. And then finally, Senate Bill 1079 has to do with solid waste collection in multifamily housing, and that would move multifamily housing from residential to commercial and essentially open up multifamily housing to commercial stature, so non-city-of-Prescott solid waste haulers could come in and take on that business, which would have the likely outcome of increasing the cost of residential service to the remainder of the residential category. It's come up a few times in the past. It's something that a lot of other cities and towns also have concerns about because of the possible impact on cost, and I know we have some conflict here on that one, so.
Allison, on the first one, is that scheduled for any committee hearings?
The licensing?
Yeah.
That is in committee tomorrow in House Judiciary.
Who sponsors that?
The sponsor is Representative Peterson.
And is anybody from our delegation signed on to it as a co-sponsor?
I don't believe so. I will double-check and let you know.
So House Judiciary, and I'm sorry, was that a House bill or a Senate bill?
House bill.
Okay. Will you keep us posted if it passes the House and goes to the Senate?
I will.
For the Senate committee meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Allison. Way to keep it short.
Thanks to you. Hangars on. We're adjourned.
Happy birthday. Way to keep it short, Mayor. Not to worry, we're here for you.
We're out of here.